Good afternoon, everybody. I would like to say on behalf of Prince George's County students, thank you for everything that you do. And it's a great opportunity to be up here and I'm very honored to be up here before you. The last time I was here at the SASWIS Building was to figure out the details of my expulsion and my charges, my felony and misdemeanor charges, after being expelled from Frederick Douglass High School my 12th grade year. During the time of my expulsion, I had community service hours at the church to do my, to take care of my charges at Victor Christian Ministries. And at my church, I met Jesus and I made the decision to give my life to Christ and to walk in the will that He has for my life. After that, I was, I was able to finish and receive my diploma at, I was able to go to Coombe Vocational High School to finish out my academic years. And in a semester's time, I received a 4.0 GPA. I'm proud to report perfect attendance. I was SDA president. I founded the first Christian group called Roots at the school. I created my own business and just last week, I won first place in the NHTC competition for the DC region. And now I have the opportunity to be before you. I am now this year taking IT courses to better my skills in business communication and computer skills. I plan to go to University of Maryland to major in business administration to further my business. And my long-term goal is to be a successful entrepreneur and a public speaker. Good afternoon. I want to once again welcome you all to the February 9th, 2012 Prince George's County Board of Education meeting. Highlights for today's topic and discussions will include the Special Education Program and the Talented Gifted Program. I want you all to remember to continue to check www.pgcps.org for upcoming events and meetings for the Board of Education. And the February 9th, 2012 Board of Education meeting will begin.
Thank you so much, Mr. Brooks. That is a fabulous story. We are so proud of you. And know that we know that you can go and do whatever you want to do beyond today. We really appreciate you doing the presentation today. And we know there's students who we talk about all the time that deserve that second and sometimes third chance. And so I want to congratulate you for focusing and being able to accomplish what you have. Thank you so much. We really, really are proud of you. Good afternoon and welcome to the February 9th, 2012 Board Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Please turn off your wireless communications as they tend to interfere with the taping of the meeting. Our colleagues, Ms. Johnson, Mr. Burrows, and Ms. Jackson are unable to be with us today. At this time, I would ask Ms. Boston if you would lead us in the board prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Ms. Boston. Ms. Jackson, call roll, please.
Ms. Donwood?
Present.
Ms. Beck?
Present.
Ms. Boston?
Present.
Mr. Burrows?
Ms. Hubeanks?
Present.
Ms. Jackson?
Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Waller?
Present.
Ms. Higgins?
Present.
Ms. Jacobs?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, prior to adoption of the agenda for today, please note the following changes. Item 8.3, Henry G. Ferguson Elementary School Replacement Award of Contract has been deleted from the agenda. Now please have a motion to accept the agenda for the February 9th, 2012 Board Meeting. Thank you, Ms. Boston. Thank you, Ms. Waller. We're probably moved the second that we adopt the agenda as amended. All in favor? Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, the motion passed. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to approve the following Board Meeting minutes on January 18th, 2012, Special Meeting regarding boundary improvements, the January 24th, 2012 Budget Work Session Minutes, and the January 26th, 2012 Board Meeting Minutes. May I please have a motion?
Some moved.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Thank you, Ms. Boston. We're probably moved the second that we approve those minutes as stated. All in favor? Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, the motion passed. This time, we will have a news break entitled "A Showcase of Schools: Building for the
It's not every day that you see students laying bricks in the middle of a school gymnasium. But then, it's equally rare for parents and their children to get the chance to see all of Prince George's schools' specialty programs in one place, including one that includes constructing an entire house built by students. For the fifth consecutive year, the School System's Specialty Showcase of Schools, held at Charles Flowers High School, highlighted dozens of programs for almost 1,000 families, all of whom were looking for a perfect academic fit for their children's talents and ambitions. What is it that is so exciting that is bringing people out tonight?
It is the Prince George's County Public School System. People are eager to find a way to get into some of these great, absolutely great programs that we have. We've got middle college here, we've got the student-run bank here, we've got the IT school here. It's fantastic. Science and tech, of course, we've got Montessori and certainly French immersion, and people want to know, how can they get into these programs?
What do you want for your daughter?
Well, she's really into performing arts. She's a student at the Washington Ballet and has been there, this is her second year there. And before that, she's been taking dance throughout the city. And so I asked her if she was serious about performing arts, and she said yes, she wants to do it, so I support her. And we already entered the lottery system to see if we can get in for 5th grade next year, and I wanted to come out and see the showcase, because if she doesn't get in through the lottery, then we're going to audition for 6th grade.
Tell me what it is you dream you want to do someday?
Someday, I want to be a singer, a dancer, or actress.
Wow. You have the poise already. I think you could do all those things right now. This seems like a good school for you.
Yes, it does. I think it would really give me a boost in, like, doing my performing arts skills and acting.
If your child is the one that loves to dance all the time, if they love to sing all the time, if they doodle on every free scrap of paper, you know, we are the people that they need to come see. And a lot of times, it's wonderful for someone who has that creative flair to be in company with other people who are like-minded.
The showcase choices reflected the myriad of educational opportunities available in the Prince George's County Public Schools. There are Montessori and French immersion schools, schools for the visual and the performing arts, other schools for the talented and gifted, specialty programs for science and technology, career and technical programs, and even charter schools. And with application deadlines looming and lottery lists filling up, parents were asking for lots of information for both now and for future planning.
I'm talking to people with three and four-year-olds who want to know, what's the best route to get my child into college? How can I have a college-growing experience? How can I be a part of a college-going culture in Prince George's County Public Schools? It's fantastic. They want to know everything.
Did you find out what you were trying to find out about AP?
I did, absolutely. Ms. Tazby has been very helpful to me. Yes, it's been really good. I've never attended a fair before, and for the last five years I've lived in Prince George's County, I've got to get to the fair, got to get to the fair. And I finally made it this year, so I'm thrilled to be here. My children are eight, four, and three, so I'm not even at the AP level yet, but I'm just trying to project ahead to figure out where I want them to go and sort of chart the path now to try to figure out, well, they need to go to this elementary school so they can go to this middle school, so they can go to this high school that has the AP courses.
Taking an advanced placement course allows you to really experience the rigor that you would experience going into college, so anybody taking the course will be better prepared when they get to college.
For those school shoppers looking at brochures and listening to the various programs coordinators and principals, perhaps the best and most enthusiastic testimonials came from the program's current students and their parents. What are you telling people about Largo? Is it too good to miss?
Yes, we're talking about the biotechnology program and the Academy of Finance promoting it for students to come and get interested in science.
And other than the academics, what else about Largo is just great?
Our basketball team!
It's nice for everybody to learn a trade. Some people don't have the grades, and for you to get out of school and do your trade, you can make quick money.
He says, "Mom, I think I can do this." I think, I said, "Of course you can." So doing this basement has helped him.
For more information, including admission requirements for any of the specialty programs, just go to the School System's website, www.pgcps.org. Remember, the right program and often the right career starts with building a solid foundation, one brick at a time. For Channels 96 and 38, this is Dave Zarin reporting.
Thank you, Dr. Height, for having a showcase of schools in the fair. That really helps parents have an idea of what they are, what parents, what they have, what we have to offer in the school district and have them foreshadow where their students need to be. So we really appreciate that and Communications Department. Good afternoon. It is National African-American History Month, also known in U.S. history as Black History Month. It's observed since 1976 annually in the United States and Canada in the month of February and in the United Kingdom in the month of October. Black History Month began as Negro History Week by historian Carter G. Woodson in 1926. His goal was to educate American people about African-American history, focusing primarily on African-Americans' cultural backgrounds and reputable achievements. The Board approved the proclamation commemorating National African-American History Month in Prince George's County Public Schools at our January 26th, 2012 Board Meeting. And during the month of February, all schools are asked to plan special activities or events in observance of National African-American History Month. A few of these upcoming events can be found on our website, which is www.pgcps.org. Please go and enjoy some of those festivities. In light of our discussion on student achievement this afternoon, I wanted to acknowledge a few highlights and achievements that are happening in our school district. And so Magnolia Elementary School is, the Robotics Club participated in the video conference with the University of Pennsylvania Department of Physics and Astronomy. The school's first LEGO League Team Transformation is conducting research on the use of implanting carbon nanotubes in chickens for early detection of salmonella. The University of Pennsylvania is currently completing the same research and has collaborated with the students at Magnolia Elementary School. Bladensburg High School Culinary Arts student Maria Otains entry in the Meatless Mondays Recipe Contest was selected for the final round of the competition. Three winners will share a total of $10,000 in scholarship prizes. Coombe Vocational School, senior Jordan Brooks, we just heard from him, has advanced to the final round of the Network for Teaching Entrepreneurship DC Regional Competition. Brooks presented his business plan on threshold graphics. Nineteen Glen Park High School students advanced to the state competition and will compete in the Maryland State Band Directors Association Solo and Ensemble Festival this spring. Thirty-eight students in the instrumental music program participated in the county festival, and students who received a superior rating were invited to participate in the state festival scheduled for May, which is at Towson University. Kudos to our teachers, Eric Russo, a special education teacher at Drew Freeman Middle School, and February Teacher of the Month. Mr. Russo began teaching two years, two years ago at Drew Freeman Middle School and since then has served as the PBIS Coordinator, Network for Teaching Entrepreneurship Club Chair and Webmaster. He has also participated in the 2011 District Curriculum Writing Program, and he is on the Drew Freeman Middle School Leadership Team. Mr. Russo is an exceptional teacher and excellent advocate for students with special needs, says Dr. Marla Dean, who is the principal of Drew Freeman Middle School. Rebecca Castle? You guys want to give a clap? Go right ahead. Awesome. Rebecca Castle, Social Studies Department Chair at Isaac Gordon Middle School, was recently honored by Congressman Steny Hoyer with a Certificate of Recognition for winning the Patricia Bayring Maryland Teacher of the Year Award. Ms. Castle was recognized by the State House of Representatives and the Senate. Before I go over upcoming events, I would be remiss if I didn't also recognize Ms. Carol Lynch for her fabulous presentation of the schools in that last presentation. She was so excited. We couldn't turn that down. Upcoming events, February 16th at 5:00 PM is our Capital Improvement Program and Finance Audit and Budget Meeting here at 7:00. We'll be talking about the FY 2013 Operating Budget. It'll be a public hearing. On the 21st at 5:00, we have a Budget Work Session, and at 7:00, we will have another public hearing on the same day regarding the budget. February 23rd is the date scheduled for the Board to vote on the budget that Superintendent has presented. Prior to that time, if he has any changes or recommendations for changes, we will hear those prior to the vote. All persons interested to speak at a Board meeting are asked to call two and a half hours prior to the time of the meeting. You can call the Board Office at 301-952-6115. Please join me in a moment of silence for the following. Christopher Donald Smith, a 9th grade student at Charles Herbert Flowers High School. Devon Gilkes, a 12th grade student at Parkdale High School. Delma McCain, mother of Terry McCain, who is a courier in our mailroom. Thank you for sharing that moment of silence. I yield a floor to Dr. Height for the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon. I would also like to send condolences to the families of the two students who were killed this week. It is tragic enough when we lose students who attend our school system, but when the lives of these kids are taken in acts of senseless crimes, then it makes it even more tragic. So, and I urge the community to come together to help the school system and all others stop violence within our community. On a lighter note, I too want to express my congratulations for Jordan Brooks, the senior from Coombe High School. I know he's probably headed back to school or off to work, but he was joined with, he was joined today by his dad, his teacher, and his principal. And as you indicated earlier, Jordan is just not a fantastic story. He's also a very successful young entrepreneur. And he won, as you indicated, first place in the DC Winter Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge, and that was held for the Network for Teaching Entrepreneurship, or NFTE. So once again, I want to congratulate Jordan, just not on his turnaround, but on the success and the opportunities that he's presenting for himself. I would also like to highlight a few accomplishments of our other students and employees across our district. As you may have heard, the state of Maryland has recently received several accolades for academic achievement. Education Week named the state number one for education for the fourth straight year. No other state has received that designation. Just this week, the College Board issued a report on the Advanced Placement Program that gave Maryland another number-one ranking for the number of seniors who earn a top score on AP exams. The gains that we have made here in Prince George's County over the last two years were instrumental to both of these statewide achievements. Last spring, our school system was the only one to see academic gains across the Maryland school assessments while the rest of the state remained flat. We've also aggressively expanded access to AP courses and encouraged our students to take the exams. As a matter of fact, we pay for them in most cases. In addition, our SAT participation rates are at a record high, and the number of seniors meeting the state graduation requirements at this time is now at 88%. At the same time, a year ago, it was at 79% of the students who had met that requirement. This demonstrates that we are on the right track. We acknowledge that there's still work to do, but nonetheless, I want to acknowledge the progress that's being made by our students and our staff members each and every day here in Prince George's County. Achievement is an appropriate focus, particularly as we celebrate Black History Month. Many of our schools are named after prominent African-Americans in Prince George's County, to name a few. Savannah Woods was a Maryland Circuit Court Judge. Dr. Henry A. Wise Jr. was the first African-American physician in the county and a Tuskegee Airman, fighter pilot. Charles Herbert Flowers is another Tuskegee Airman. I hope that our students and community will learn more about their school namesakes this month and draw inspiration from these examples. Speaking of our local heroes, I would like to congratulate Bladensburg High School Girls Basketball Coach Lester Butler on reaching his 300th victory this week. For 28 years, Coach Butler has shown our athletes the importance of performing well on the court and in the classroom. And finally, I would like to extend congratulations to our Chief Financial Officer and his team, Matt Stansky, and our Office of Budget and Management Service for their hard work in helping Prince George's County Public Schools receive another distinguished budget presentation award from the National Government Finance Officers Association. This is the third straight year that we have won this award, which recognizes how well the budget serves as a policy document, financial plan, operations guide, and communications tool. Congratulations, Mr. Stansky and your department, on another fine achievement. Madam Chair, this concludes my written remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Height. Is that a blush, Mr. Stansky?
Maybe a slight one.
Colleagues, we do have registered speakers for Item 6.1, but not for Items 4.0, I'm sorry, for Not, for Item 5.0, so I'm going to ask Mr. Lucci if he would please come forward and give us the presentation for the legislative updates. Thank you, Mr. Lucci.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Education. The Maryland General Assembly Session for 2012 is now one-third over, and so last week was the deadline for the Senate bills to be introduced to get a hearing, and today's the deadline for the House bills. So the next few days will be a whole onslaught of new legislation appearing and be scheduled in four committees, so it's going, the work will start picking up. In terms of the major budget issues, it's harder to say what's going to happen at this point, because everybody knows that they remove one item from the budget that they don't like in terms of a revenue generator or a cost saver. As you know from your work, you have to backfill it with something else. And so there's just a lot of looking at each other and not really, and figuring out what's going to happen, but no real developments on that front yet. I have for you today, five pieces of legislation for your consideration. Some of these you may recognize from previous years, and we'll start with the first one, House Bill 191, Senate Bill 307, State Board of Education Financial Literacy Curriculum Graduation Requirement. This is one of the ones that's been introduced the last two years, and the Maryland Association of Boards of Education has always opposed as an unfunded mandate. Six county boards have decided to make financial literacy a graduation requirement, but the point is, they made the decision themselves, not being mandated to do it by the state. And so my recommendation would be, even though it's a very worthy goal, the legislation seeks to attain, to oppose this legislation. Want me to go to each, explain each one before you do your voting? House Bill 196, Student Health and Fitness Act. Bill requires all public students, school students in kindergarten through grade five to be provided with daily programs of physical activity totaling 150 minutes per week, including a minimum of 90 minutes per week of physical education. This bill also has been introduced the last two years. In the last two years, the Maryland Association of Boards of Education has opposed it as an unfunded mandate. Statewide, the fiscal note would be $24 million because of the need to hire more teachers and lengthen the school day. House Bill 201, Public Schools Meal Menus Nutritional Information. This bill requires each school to list next to an item on its published menu the number of calories contained in the menu item, beginning in the 2012, 2013 school year. The bill takes effect July 1, 2012. This was introduced last year, and the Ways and Means Committee never even voted on it, so it's back again this year. Senate Bill 197, Sales and Use Tax Distribution of Revenue is Public School Construction. You'll recall last year that the alcohol sales tax was raised from 6% to 9%, and that a good amount of that money last year was dedicated for school construction projects that were ready to go within a year, and that Prince George's County received $9 million of that money. This bill, sponsored by Senator McFadden, liked those allocations so much, he wants that to be an annual appropriation. It doesn't take it out of the alcohol tax money, but it says annually out of the sales tax money that it should have these annual appropriations for our school construction on top of the normal school construction allocation. So of course, my recommendation is that we support this, because the $9 million was put to very good use last year and can be put to good use again. Senate Bill 293, Education Core Content Areas Accountability Program is sponsored by Senator Miller. This asks that beginning in the 2014, 2015 school year, that the state superintendent of schools implement assessment programs at each level of school, elementary, middle school, and high school, and assessment program in social studies. You'll recall there used to be an HSA in government, and that last year, the Governor and the General Assembly and the Maryland State Department of Education jointly agreed for cost-cutting purposes to not have that HSA. So this asks to be done throughout. The Maryland Association of Boards of Education opposes this, because its argument is that the General Assembly has delegated to the state and county boards of education the responsibility for setting the curriculum, and so they should leave that authority with those, with those boards. And it certainly intends to have assessments for social studies, but just wants to be able to do it through the way that the current law intended. Finally, Senate Bill 329, Parent-Teacher Meetings Unpaid Leave. Require employers to provide parents the time, four hours for unpaid leave to go and meet with a teacher, and have a three-days' worth of notice. The Maryland Association of Boards of Education is supporting, and the Maryland Chamber of Commerce is opposing, because they're saying it's a mandate on them. I happen to think, my recommendation would be to go along with the Maryland Association of Boards of Education and encourage parents to seek out meetings with their children's teachers, because it could only help the children's education. So that's, those are the five pieces of legislation and my recommendations for them.
Thank you, Mr. Lucci. Colleagues, prior to entertaining questions, I would yield to Dr. Height for his, any recommendations he has to the Board on these pieces of legislation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, I will just begin, I will begin with the bills in order and just work through. And if I don't have any comments on one or more, I just will not deal with that one. So the first one, House Bill 191, Senate Bill 307, that is the financial literacy curriculum as a graduation requirement. As indicated by Mr. Lucci, there is no problem whatsoever with making this a graduation requirement. The problem, however, is with making it a mandatory requirement that is unfunded. This requirement would cause Prince George's County to add 65 FTEs just at the 9th grade level. That if we translate that to cost, that's about $4 million. That if it's not a part of this legislation, that's a cost that we would have to absorb in order to do this. Right now, we are implementing components of financial literacy through some of the courses that are already a part of the graduation requirement, and we think that's a better means to introduce financial literacy. So my recommendation is, in its current form, that the Board opposed that. The Student Health and Fitness Act, once again, that, as you know, we have a healthy alliance for healthier generation, and we're working to really increase the student health and fitness across our system. But with a $24.2 million statewide price tag and what that would mean for Prince George's County, I don't see how we can do anything but oppose that. The, I would support Senate Bill 197, and as indicated earlier, that meant an additional $9 million, and anything that would make the revenue from the alcohol tax an annual appropriation in support of schools, I think, is worthy of supporting. I have no position on Senate Bill 293, Core Content Areas, and here's why. Because that, speaking more to the Board of Education, we already have social studies as a part of that requirement. as a part of that requirement. The MSDE actually removed the high school assessment from that, from a graduation requirement. They didn't remove the course, Social Studies. So, we still have a Social Studies class, we just no longer have the high school assessment. So, that would, I'm taking no position because I don't know what that would mean to the systems yet. But in its current form, if it's part of the accountability program, then that is an issue that would have to be addressed at the state level and not through the districts. Now, I would be the first to oppose it, then if the state comes back and says that counties must come up with a way to do this assessment. But that's not how the bill reads in its current form. I would also support Senate Bill 329, Parent/Teacher Meetings Unpaid Leave. I think anything that we can do to remove barriers for parents who want to attend meetings about their children at their schools is something that we should support. So, those are my positions on, on the bills.
Thank you, Dr. Height, for that information. I'll entertain a question from colleagues. Ms. Higgins?
Thank you. Dr. Height, if I could follow up on House Bill 201, which has to do with public schools' meals menus? It was on our agenda. I'm not sure, Mr. Lucci, if that's one that we should be discussing, or you?
Yes.
You're not prepared?
I don't have enough information on that, Ms. Higgins. And I would like to come back and, I want to take a deeper look at that. I just didn't have enough information to comment on it today.
Okay, all right. And if I understand you correctly, on the Senate Bill 293, Senator Miller's bill, you're saying that, because we, if we take a position as a board today, we would just take no position right now?
Oh, no, that's my position. So, I'm taking no position on that, because I don't know if it's going to have a fiscal note attached to it or not in its current form. I didn't make a suggestion to the board on that. So, you could support or oppose that bill.
And, I'm sorry, what? That's, they talked about?
293 is not on the agenda.
That's right. Okay, so we're not talking about that one then, in any case?
I was going to bring that up when we?
When somebody else talked?
It's okay. I think it was, I think it was going to be on the agenda, it's not on the agenda, so we won't address that. Plus, it wasn't related to the public, so that's not one that we would have talked about.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
So, and just not to be flippant, but on Senate Bill 307 and House Bill 191 about financial literacy, the position is that for our own financial literacy, we would say no to $4 million and 65 FTEs. Is that correct? For our own financial literacy issues?
That is correct.
We would say no to getting 65 more. Thank you, all right.
Any other comments, questions, concerns around the legislation? Ms. Beck?
I have a question about Senate Bill 329, the unpaid leave bill. The time allocation here says that you may not use more than four hours of unpaid leave per parent/teacher meeting. So, I have four children. So, does that multiply four times four? So, that, to me, would be 16 hours of unpaid leave? And then, the next section says, use unpaid leave more than twice per each half of an academic year. So, in terms of timing, as a municipal employee, I could be using a lot of unpaid leave for attending each one of four children's parent/teacher meetings. And I don't want to appear like I'm not in favor of attending these meetings. I shifted my schedule when I was working so that I could attend these. But I do have concerns when you quantify the number of hours, and then you don't look at extenuating circumstances like people who have numerous children and then have the ability to take unpaid leave at this level. So, I could really see why the chamber might have some issues with it.
I agree that there's no limit on the number of children for whom you could go to parent/teacher meetings, except that I think the limit of twice per half of an academic year limits it to four meetings per year. And for all your children, is the way I read it. Which means you go for one child four times, or for four children, one time, but you're limited to, to four of these meetings with unpaid leave that occurs up per year.
Okay, so in parentheses one, it says, use more than four hours of unpaid leave per parent/teacher meeting. So, that, to me, would be per parent/teacher meeting, which would be one per child, not four hours designated for all four of my children that were in three separate schools at that point.
Right.
Okay. I share some of the concerns when you get into, this, to me, almost is an unfunded mandate against the business community or the job that these people fill when they're at work. And while I really, I hesitate even commenting, because it does sound like I would be anti-parent/teacher meeting, which is far from it. It's just that I have concerns about this type of a mandate in terms of hours and the extenuating circumstances that you might end up in. I know I had a child with special needs, and I was in the building every other week. So, this, this wouldn't even scratch the surface in terms of the time that I would need away from work.
Right. And even though it says unpaid leave, there's still an expense for backfilling for that employee's time.
Right, someone's still got to do that job, right. So, we're not discussing the social studies bill? Okay. Because I didn't read that, so, thank you.
No problem.
I don't know what, I don't know.
We missed it, Mr. Lucci.
Okay. It's somewhere in the electrons between Calverton and Upper Mar- Annapolis and Upper Marlboro.
You know, I think we can take them in order. The only other thing, I was sort of reluctant to talk about this one too, but there's two areas on the parent leave bill, essentially. One area where it indicates that the employer may require evidence after the leave has been used. I would think it should be required before, as evidence that that's where you're going. But I think the other thing that's also important is that this applies to unpaid leave. So, it doesn't limit an employer's ability to, say, to an employee, you can take your own leave and require, whether it's through collective bargaining, through whatever their agreement, their leave policies are, that you have to give prior notice beyond what's said here. So, I think, you know, this is very narrow and specific to providing for unpaid leave time in those provisions, unless I'm interpreting that wrong. It still is broad enough for an employer to decide what they want to do, in course, with their own leave policies.
Right, doesn't affect their use of annual leave.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, so colleagues, we'll take these in, let's take them in Senate Bill order. Let's go with one, Senate Bill 197, 307, and 329. I entertain a motion on 307. I'm sorry, 197.
I move that we accept the Senate Bill 197.
Is there a second? It's been properly moved that we support Senate Bill 197, which is the Sales and Use Tax Distribution of Revenues for Public School Construction. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Motion passed. 307, Senate Bill 307.
Move to oppose.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved, the second, that we oppose Senate Bill 307. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Dr. Height, I'm sure you will explain this to our comptroller. He would not like that. Thank you. Motion passed. Senate Bill 329.
329 is which?
Senate Bill, that's the parent/teacher meetings, unpaid leave.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I need you to support.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. Is there a second to support?
Second.
It's been properly moved, the second, that we support Senate Bill 329, which is the Education Parent/Teacher Meetings Unpaid Leave. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections?
No.
I don't know.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Armwood?
Aye.
Ms. Beck?
No.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
No.
Ms. Higgins?
No.
Ms. Jacobs? Motion is four ayes, three nays. Motion fails.
Move no opinion, no position.
Is there a second? It's been properly moved, the second, that the board take no position on Senate Bill 329.
How could there be four?
Did we get the numbers right?
Three and three. Oh, we're four.
You have to count yourself, Ms. Higgins, your vote does count. The motion is now to take no position on Senate Bill 329, which will be the official record if we, if it passes. And I have a second. So, to take no position, Mr. Lucci would express to the legislature that the board took no position, which essentially means we're not opposing it and we're not supporting it. Does that sound right, Mr. Lucci?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Call the roll, Ms. Jackson, please.
I didn't get a second.
Oh, Ms. Higgins, second.
Thank you.
I'll count myself.
Ms. Armwood?
Aye.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Boston? Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Colleagues, on House Bill 196, which is the Student Health and Fitness Act, is there a motion?
I move we oppose the Student Health and Fitness.
It's been properly moved, the second. Thank you, Ms. Higgins and Ms. Beck, on the Student Health and Fitness Act. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Motion passed. Thank you. House Bill 201, Public Schools Meal Menus Nutrition Information. Do we do that one? We can do that one.
This is the one where the Dr. Height recommended that you table, I guess, to the next one.
Move to table.
All in favor? So, Mr. Lucci, if you'll bring that one back, 201. Thank you so much. Any other, anything else you need from us?
No, back to Annapolis. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the letter that you did draft for the legislators stating our position regarding maintenance of effort.
Here you are.
We keep driving it home. Hope it helps. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's see, Dr. Height, where does that bring us? That brings us to item 6.0.
It does, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have four registered speakers, I think. Yes. We have four registered speakers. To speak on discussion item 6.1, the Talented and Gifted Program, you must speak on the topic for which you have registered. We will not address your comments, except to the extent for clarification purposes. At the sound of the buzzer, we ask that you complete the sentence that you are on only. If you go beyond that, the mic will be turned off. You may not relinquish any part of your speaking time to a registered or unregistered speaker. We also ask that you use titles rather than names, board member, superintendent, et cetera. Please leave a copy of your statement in the file box located next to the microphone, which is where Mr. Bryant Coleman, our Communications Director, is, and your adherence to these guidelines will ensure that public comment is smooth. Mr. David Kahn, co-chair of Citizens for an Elected Board.
Thank you. As the parent of gifted sons and daughters who are now adults, I'm very interested in this, and I'm really glad that there's going to be a discussion on it. We've got a pretty good program here, and I'm very heartened that, Dr. Height, that you're planning on expanding the dedicated schools for gifted education. There are really three major things that are necessary for a successful program. One is identification of the students who could benefit from differentiated program. The second is specially trained teachers, because gifted children learn differently. And third is the opportunity for intellectually gifted students to interact with their peers. In some cases, where the giftedness may just be in a single subject area, the pull-out program might be useful. However, when you have kids that are gifted across the board, they really do need a full day of specialized education and an opportunity to interact. I'm pleased that the discussion will include the subject of twice-exceptional students. These are students who have an IEP or a 504 plan, kids who have various types of disabilities, including learning disabilities, and yet are intellectually gifted, and we want to make sure those don't fall through the cracks. Sometimes they can. I have a grandson in the Virginia schools, for example, who has a 504 plan, and the teacher who was monitoring his work and helping him with that plan went out on long-term leave. His grades plummeted, and he was not doing his work, and yet, he got, I think it's called 600 on the SOLs, whatever it was, it was 100% the top score, even though he didn't do his homework, but he learned everything. And that brings me to the kids who really fall through the crack. These are the non-talented, the underperforming gifted students. And they have different learning styles, but they don't have an IEP, they don't have a 504 plan. They may be disciplinary problems, they may be bored, they may be looking out the window, they may not be doing their homework, but they have the capability of excelling. I was once told with my daughter, when she was a kid, what are you complaining about? She's on grade level. Well, she later joined me as a member of Mensa, and she did not benefit from gifted education because she was not identified. One last thing, and that is that I once heard an administrator in our school say, "We can't help them all, so we only do what the law requires." That's not enough. All kids who are gifted need to be identified and have a chance to benefit from the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kahn.
Thank you very much. I'm a parent at Greenbelt Elementary School. Greenbelt Elementary School is a tag in a regular classroom school, yet no extra funding is going to teach tag in TRC schools. Now that the focus is on student-based budgeting and that type of funding, this ought to change. Just like funds follow IEP students, ESOL students, and farm students, funds ought to follow tag students as well. The changes that are made at Greenbelt Middle School are fantastic, and it includes a new tag program there. However, the move of the tag program there and the move of sixth graders from Greenbelt Elementary School and Hollywood Elementary School to GMS is leaving a huge impact on these two schools, which is adversely impacting tag students there also. With student-based budgeting, GES is set to take a double hit financially. This will continue to hurt our tag students further. The school is due to take, I believe, an 8% cut to its annual budget because of this. I hope the board will be able to refocus some positive energy that we've seen going to GMS and money to GES and Hollywood, so we can continue to see progress, and we don't lose the wonderful progress made by principals Curl, Seidel, and now Monica Gaines. Just 10, 15 years ago, many, many parents in our community would never dream of letting their children attend GES, and that's been turned around by parent community and our principals. It is no small measure because of the TRC program, which for many works, years worked fairly well. It's not working as well today. I hope we don't lose that momentum. We need to strengthen the tag program in neighborhood schools, and this can be done with a TRC program that works. Let's see. Looking at the student-based budgeting plans, again, I suggest that we look at IEP, ESOL, and farm students, who all come with extra budget allocations attached. It is not so for tag. That ought to- That ought to change and I encourage the board and the superintendent to reconsider the proposal to include an allocation for tag-identified students. As it stands, and in the verbiage used a number of times today here, this is an unfunded mandate against the TRC schools. And we have a lot of students in TRC schools. It can work beautifully. And we need our neighborhood schools to be strong neighborhood schools. This is what's going to strengthen our communities, make sure our parents don't, you know, take a hike off to some other county, and we need them to stay with us. So to conclude, GES is taking a huge financial hit with the proposed budget, not just for tag students, but overall, in part because of the move of the sixth grade and the simultaneous move to student-based budgeting. And it leaves the school in a much more dire situation than just about any school around. We are at risk of losing several key administrative positions. This reputation of a neighborhood school, which is a feeder school to the new tag center at GMS, is therefore at risk. I really thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I hope you will take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeBecco. Hope I said that right. Lucy Dirksen?
As recently as last year, Greenbelt Elementary School was used as a model of tag in the regular classroom. How can we maintain this without proper funding? If we can't, we will continue to lose involved parents to private schools. It has come to my attention that tag-identified students do not get any extra funding, yet tag centers do. Now that GES will be switching to student, school-based budgeting, we will be losing more funding because our rising sixth graders will be moving to the middle school and the extra funding from our sixth graders will be lost. We need to fund the students' individual needs that are in the school, including tag-identified students. I was once a student of Prince George's County Public Schools in 1977. After being bused to three schools in one year, my parents chose to send me and my brother to private school. As a parent of a sixth, third, and first grader in Prince George's County Public Schools, we need to make sure that our school stays strong for all our students and that includes funding for tag in the regular classroom.
Thank you, Ms. Dirksen. Amy Hansen?
Good afternoon. I'm Amy Hansen, I am a parent of a student at Greenbelt Elementary School and a parent of a student at Greenbelt Middle School and I am the PTA President at Greenbelt Middle School. And I've spoken before you several other times, and the boards before you, and the superintendents before you. I've been here for nine years, working in our schools. I have two tag students, and I thought hard about Glen Arden Woods, but the heart of our public schools is our neighborhood schools. And so I worked very hard at making sure my kids could get what they needed at the neighborhood school and that required energy from me and from the tag department and hearing from me and wonderful tag department. But I wanted you to know that some of the unintended problems that may be caused by moving the sixth graders to Greenbelt Middle School, that you've just heard my friends talk about, that by losing a large chunk of money all at once, we are endangering that school. For the first time this year, you're giving extra money for sixth graders. At the same time, those sixth graders are removed from our school. Presumably, that money came from somewhere else in last year's budget. I don't believe it just was created out of thin air. And so now the school is without the sixth graders and has less money per pupil than they did last year. Some of that is my assumption, because you had to have had that money somewhere in the system. It couldn't have just come out of nothing. We're also losing boundary kids to Magnolia, there are not a whole lot of them, but all in all, it's about an 8% cut. I have worked very hard at Greenbelt Middle School and pushed the previous board and this one to pay attention and help it be the school that it can be. It's a good school right now. And this is partly due to the new administration, but it's in large part due to the students. We worked at convincing the neighbors to go in there and the neighbors who had their kids in the local schools in TRC programs. If we hurt these neighborhood schools, we will be right back at having mediocre middle schools. We need, the TRC does work, but the teachers need your support, need the support of the parents, and we need the money to make sure that they can keep doing this. So please pay attention to how the changes you're proposing with the student-based budgeting are going to affect these neighborhood schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hansen. Colleagues, that concludes public comment on agenda item 6.1. And at this time, Dr. Height, I'll yield to you for presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this time I'm ready. The, so the first discussion item is Talented and Gifted Program and I'm going to ask that Talented and Gifted Supervisor, Mr. Teresa Jackson, come up and walk us through the presentation and the conclusion of that presentation. We will be glad to entertain questions or comments from the board. Ms. Jackson?
Thanks. Good afternoon. Today's presentation is going to be an overview of the Talented and Gifted Program, which includes the mission, the vision, enrollment data, as well as tag student achievement data. The mission of the Talented and Gifted Program is to provide gifted students with appropriately challenging, enriched, accelerated, and differentiated curriculum to ensure their continual academic growth and to reach their full potential. We have program objectives and one of the first program objectives is to provide regularly scheduled opportunities for the students to meet with their intellectual peers, to provide a learning environment in which instructional strategies appropriate to their unique learning characteristics of the intellectually gifted student are utilized, to provide opportunities for individuals and/or small groups to utilize advanced research skills in designing and conducting independent investigations and topics of student interest, to acquire advanced competencies and higher-level thinking skills, including critical and creative thinking skills, research skills, study skills, communication skills, and to develop an understanding of the purpose and process of self-and-group evaluation. Our vision, we have many programming goals. So we will continue to identify students for the tag program from diverse backgrounds. Later in the presentation, you will see a breakdown of our tag numbers when it comes to various races, our FARM students are twice-exceptional students in our ALL population. We are expanding the Primary Talent Development Pilot Program. This year, MSDE is working with us on a pre-K and K Primary Talent Development Program at Judge Woods, Robert Gray, and Capital Heights Elementary School. So that's only three schools, next year we will expand it to their first and second grade classes and eventually, we would like to expand it across the district. Obviously, we will be establishing the tag program at Greenbelt Middle School, which you voted to approve. We will also be expanding the programs at Glen Arden Woods, Heather Hills, and Acute Creek. We will continue to establish and expand the tag in the regular classroom programs at selected schools. With Common Core, we will have to align our tag curricula to Common Core standards. We provide professional development across the district, systemic professional development for teachers of tag students, and we have an emphasis on Title I teachers. And then, we have four schools currently that have received the Excellence and Gifted and Talented Education Certification from MSDE and our goal is to increase the number of schools that meet the criteria for that award. Walker Mill Middle School, Valley View Elementary, and Montpelier Elementary will be receiving the award at the end of the month. And Kenmore Middle School received it last year. Our tag district enrollment, as you can see, this is our percentage of tag students in grades 2 through 12 across the district. The percentage stays between 10 and 12%, but that can fluctuate from year to year. This chart shows you how diverse our tag population is in Prince George's County. Although historically gifted programs have excluded students from diverse backgrounds, you can see that our tag program is very inclusive. Obviously, identifying and serving students with, from our twice-exceptional population and our FARMs population can be a little more challenging. So it requires more effort, more training, more awareness. But those numbers continue to go up and were pretty consistent. This is a chart of the different program models. Every elementary school and middle school, well, all of our schools have tag-identified students. This is a breakdown of our program models. The Tag Center Program, we currently have six elementary schools with the program, which is a school within a school program. Then we have Acute Creek Academy, that's the two-to-eight program. And there's a little typo there, it really should say two middle schools, but next year it will be three middle schools because we're adding Greenbelt Middle. Once children are tag-identified, their parents have the option of staying at their neighborhood school to receive the neighborhood services, where they can apply to the lottery for possible placement into the full-day gifted program. Our neighborhood programs are the Tag Pull-Out Program and the Tag in the Regular Classroom Program. This year, we have 29 schools that are implementing the Tag in the Regular Classroom Program. We have three unique schools that have a combination of the TRC program and the Pull-Out Program, because that's what their community needs. And then, we have 101 schools implementing the Pull-Out Program. Tag enrollment, this shows you the percentage of students by level in the various different programs. So you can see 21% of our elementary school students are being served in the center programs. Now we're looking at tag student achievement data. So we disaggregate the tag data and this is broken down by grade level. So this is the percentage of students that received proficient or advanced on last year's MSA in reading and math. The next slide is a breakdown of the FAST data, a percentage of students, tag students scoring proficient or advanced, by grade level. And this is this year's first quarter FAST data, broken down by grade level. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Who wants to go first? Ms. Beck? Boston?
Thank you. My questions are on Slide 7 and Slide 8. Several years ago, the past board asked for by-school tag numbers. So the concern generated was that while there might be some disadvantages in terms of location and farms and ELL, we still wanted to see tag students being identified. And we were concerned that maybe some schools that had very challenging populations might not have tag-identified students in the building. And so, I think that was in 2007 perhaps? I know it was Dr. Dacey that brought us this data. I'd like to see that follow-up data.
Okay.
Tag by school.
We can provide it by school, we've tracked it for the past seven years and we have seen 75% of our Title I schools have increased their identification of tag students. So to do a five or six-year comparison, you'll see increases.
And I think that's what I'm looking for. I need to be able to say that tag is not a response to a certain group of parents who are doing something different with their children or it's "tag in the water," which is, you know, a phrase that I've heard several times from certain communities where the entire community is tag.
So, Ms. Hathaway Beck, another reason for what Ms. Jackson just explained is the fact that to address the point that you just made, so that we are not just considering certain groups of children
Right.
by their
Demographics.
Demographics, then we are also assessing everyone. So, I mean, and now we are seeing where regardless of where children live, we are also assessing their skills as well. So it's not depending on agency from a group of individuals or individual, but that assessment is across the board.
And I think that would be really valuable for us to not just hope and suspect that that's where we're going with tag, but that we can actually see where we are making improvements and where we don't have a school that might have no identified tag child in it.
Yeah.
That's the oversight in terms of equity, that this is a fabulous program, but we want to make sure that kids who need this program are being identified and gaining access into this curriculum.
Because we do global testing in first and third grade and because we generate nominations directly from our test data, it's not, we're not relying on a parent or a teacher to advocate for screening. That's where we capture most of our students. So it's because of the test nominations and the global testing that we see these increases and we see the diversity. In addition, for the past seven years, we've been looking at discrepancies in data, verbal and non-verbal discrepancies, and we've been able to provide additional assessments. That's how our 10% of our tag population is ELL, because we're able to do a more in-depth review.
My other question is on Slide 8, which gives the subgroup populations for tag. Can we add, would it be possible to add additional columns so that we can compare, for example, the Hispanic tag population is 14%? So we can compare that against what the Prince George's County population is, not only in terms of percent, but in terms of numbers, so that we have a better idea of over-identification and certain categories are under-identification? I think that that would kind of give a more robust look at that tag column.
Okay, we can include that.
And finally, so this information will be in the follow-up section on the board docs. So the public that's interested in seeing this information needs to go to board docs at our next meeting and it'll be in the Agenda category, Follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Ms. Boston?
Hi. Can you give me some more information or expand on the information that you gave us on Slide 5 about implementing the pilot program for, I think you said, pre-K to 1?
Yes. MSDE has a curriculum called Primary Talent Development. It's for all students, it's pre-K to 2. And they had grant funding this year, so they're collaborating with us to train the pre-K and kindergarten teachers at the three schools in how to deliver these modules. The focus is on seven specific thinking skills, they're competencies. We've had the first training, the next training is scheduled March 6. They have the curriculum guides, all the materials have been purchased. And next year, we will expand it to the first and second grade teachers at those three sites. And from there, expansion will be based on funding.
So I guess what I'm hearing you saying, that the kids in pre-K will be identified based on, or they will be identified before they enter?
Their talents will be nurtured. It's about nurturing the talents of all children. So the Primary Talent Development is, will allow them to experience these modules and be taught these thinking skills explicitly. And when they get to first grade and they are tested for the first time, it's quite possible that many of them will qualify for tag.
Thank you.
Ms. Boston, if I could add to that?
Yes.
It goes to the belief that tag students aren't just born, but it's what they're exposed to. So the primary talent purposefully exposes kids to the types of thinking that we think generate into tag behaviors. And several districts have used primary talent and we were able to include these schools through one of the sub-grants in Race to the Top through the state of Maryland. So it's actually not part of our Race to the Top money, it's part of Maryland's Race to the Top money. So we were really excited and we purposefully picked schools that, matter of fact, this is how the grant was written, that were in our turnaround middle school feeder zones. So that's actually how we selected the schools.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Higgins?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jackson, for your hard work and for your presentation today. If you could, following up on some of the comments that were made by our speakers. If you could, following up on some of the comments that were made by our speakers in regards to the tag in the classroom, how do you see the withdrawal of the sixth graders to another setting impacting a tag program in a regular school?
Well, the Tag in the Regular Classroom programs are select, the schools are selected based on their overall tag population. The training of their teachers, or at least the desire for the teachers to commit to the training, the support of the administrator. And Green Belt has definitely been a, one of our model TRC schools for several years through several administrations, as well as teacher changes at the school. So I, until we see the actual enrollment numbers, I anticipate they'll continue to be a TRC school. Training and resources to support the TRC program comes from the Tag Office Central Office budget. That will continue. So based on our resources, we'll depend, we will, we will continue to grow and strengthen the programs that we have. If we see schools that have a drop in tag enrollment because of boundary changes, then, then we'll work, we'll work with the principal to reestablish the program that's appropriate for their school. I don't anticipate our, our existing TRC schools will change. And if anything, we might add more to that list next year.
So the determination of tag in the regular classroom is, how, how is a school determined to be?
How large?
As opposed to maybe a pullout?
How large their tag population is. In order to have an effective tag in the regular classroom program.
Right.
There has to be a large enough cluster of tag identified students at each grade level, which is typically seven to ten students. So we're looking at schools that have a tag population of over fifty or more. So schools with very small tag populations can effectively implement the TRC program. So we, we, we try to design the program around the, the individual school needs. But teacher training has a lot to do with it. And a TRC program, you need at least one teacher at each grade level to have specific training and gifted best practices, and that's, that, that's cost.
Okay. And, and maybe, because I saw one of the goals that you mentioned was professional development and teacher training. So overall, where are we this year? And where are we next year in regards to, last year? In regards to the professional development? And this would be for teachers who would be providing direct service and those classroom teachers, knowledge about how to provide rigor for tag students. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We, historically, the Tag Office has provided a variety of different professional development opportunities, ranging from a continuing professional development course to systemic one-day workshops, to bringing in educational consultants. And all of that is, is contingent upon available funds, as well as human resources to deliver the training. So this year, we haven't had the opportunity or the resources to offer as many opportunities as we have in the past. Next year, will be determined once the budget process is completed.
Okay.
But those are systemic trainings. They're not exclusive to any one program. And we do differentiate. Some of the programs do require specific trainings.
So with our initiative to really kind of pump tag with the additional slots that were going to be six hundred across the, the system, which, you know, I think the board has said many times applauded the administration's for its initiative in that, we're not sure whether the professional development, where we are with the professional development dollars on that? Am I hearing that correct?
We actually cobbled together money for professional development. And as soon as the proposal went out, Teresa and I started working on using Title II dollars to increase professional development. And Teresa, normally what they do is they do like one location for training. We actually talked about putting the training in different places so they're closer to Green Belt Middle and closer to Acakeek instead of just the center in the county. So Teresa's actually been working pretty hard on that. Ever since the proposal was first floated, we started building the infrastructure just in case when you guys voted, we would be ready to roll.
Okay, all right. So you're looking to address that, given our issues with dollars?
Yeah. We, we were able to pull some Title II, worked with Dr. Whitehead, so we were able to get some funds together for that.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. I just wanted to kind of follow up a little bit on that, Dr. Arbogast. So, so, I mean, we, we did just have the boundary change vote, and it's going to increase the number of opportunities for tag students. But, so what is the district's process? When we have those parents who have students who are, who are in the pullout classroom, and they start the school year without a teacher? And then they go, I mean, you know, where we've, that's not happening. That's not going to happen.
No ma'am, no ma'am. We're going to have the training all this, um, spring and summer. So Teresa's actually already gone out and met with those individual staff so that they could talk about, those who don't have the training will get the training. So, no, all that should be in place before August.
So I could see that being, Dr. Height, part of your back-to-school report because we really have had complaints in that area where parents say their, their child has been tag identified, and, but they, you know, they spend half the school year without getting the services, and we don't want to see that happen, obviously. Ms. Waller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad to hear about the equity part of our Talented and Gifted Program. And you state that you test in the first and third grades. And School Board District Three, and I guess throughout the others, we have a large transient population. What happens to those students that perhaps would come into the district in the fourth grade? How are they recognized? And what happens to those students?
As a new registrant to the county, the children can be tested and screened. We, we do testing off-level. But it would be incumbent upon either the parent or the teacher at that point to nominate the child. So each year, we train a tag coordinator at each school. They're not dedicated positions. They're an assigned responsibility. Oftentimes, media specialists, guidance counselors. We train them, and we teach them about the processes. And as a new registrant at any grade level that's not first and third, they're eligible for off-level testing.
And I would just like to follow up. So when the students come in, and I'm sure this will be in your data, I'm just curious, how many of the students that are, if they are transferring, they're coming into our district or whatever, how many of them are accepted into tag? And because I think sometimes there's a misnomer that, you know, if my child is not tagged, that they're not going to be successful. And certainly, that is not true. And so I do have a concern. I think, I think tag is, is awesome. I think it's a wonderful program, and certainly speaks to the academic levels that we want to see our students achieve. But in the meantime, I would also like to ensure that other students be given a chance to be given these opportunities. I know there are limited slots, but I do feel that they should be given the opportunity and that we explain to our constituents, if your child is not in tag or not chosen to tag, this program is available for you, or we can put them in a higher-level classes, teaching at a higher level.
As a district, we do encourage that. I mean, we're talking, if they don't get into the Tag Center, they will still receive tag services at their neighborhood school. And if we have a child that's not tag identified, doesn't meet the criteria, but shows exceptional abilities in math or reading, then it, it is encouraged that if they need to go to an advanced math class or reading class. That, that varies from school to school. And we receive those phone calls from principals all the time to say, "How, how can you guide me to handle this student?" So it does happen.
Well, I would be interested in seeing the data as it relates to the various populations and the school board districts to see how it's being, how we, how we are really addressing tag students, those that have already been designated, and those students that are achieving, and those parents that would like for their children to achieve at a higher level. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Mr. Burrows?
Thank you so much. And I, I had a personal issue, that's why I came a little late. Most of my questions have already been asked, so in the next round, I'll make sure I buzz in first. But back on slide, doesn't have a number, but it's the demographic slide. Can you talk about students with special learning needs, IEPs, 504s?
Sure.
In, in the tag program?
Sure. We currently have three, three point seven percent of our tag population is twice exceptional. Means they either have an IEP or 504. The screening process is a little more intense. We look at, we consider all of the traditional tag identification requirements, as well as their IEP psychological assessments. And what we, what we discover is there's no single profile for these students. They have discrepancies in their subtests and their scores, and a discrepancy between their performance, their ability, their aptitude, and their achievement. But we use multiconfirming data in order to identify them and then provide them with the appropriate services. They can receive all their special ed services while also receiving their tag services. Kenmore Middle School's tag program has a large number of twice-exceptional students. They're autistic, and they're gifted. They, the, the, the learning needs and the, and the range of disabilities varies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Mr. Armwood?
Thank you. The comment was made that tag students do not receive fund, additional funding under student-based budgeting. And I was looking at the student-based budgeting weighting factors, and I see high academic performance. But I do want to ask, why aren't tag students given a weighting factor in student-based budgeting? Because that does seem unfair since they do require additional resources.
So we actually locked the tag services. So tag services that are provided to a school are over and above student-based budgeting. And we actually believe that the weighting on high academic achievement actually was kind of a backdoor tag fund because it was the double advanced. And as you saw in the data, many of our tag students are double advanced. So we were trying to, so we have the locked positions for tag, but we also have the double advanced. So we're kind of trying to hit it from two directions.
Okay, so tag students are also captured in the advanced student weighting factor?
Not all, but most of them are in the, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But we didn't use tag in and of itself as a weight, but the double advanced we captured. But it's really important to know that the locked services go over top of student-based budgeting.
Let me, just a practical question. Let's say you have two students in a school, school identified as tag capable. How are those resources allocated to those two individual students in a small school?
Well, if we have a school with a small tag population, then there's, the service delivery model is the Tag Pullout Program. So all the resources, the curriculum guides, the student booklets, the training, the supplemental resources, all of that comes through the Tag Office, disseminated to the schools in order for them to then deliver the services to the students.
So the school is required to identify a existing staff member to deliver that instruction?
Yeah, the pullout teachers are, are often, like I said, media specialists, guidance counselors, out of the classroom teaching positions. We train, we train them annually to deliver the pullout curriculum.
What is the result shown as to the quality of pullout versus having a dedicated tags teacher?
Well, ideally, we would love to have gifted resource teachers in each school, that their primary focus is working with the gifted population and the teachers of the gifted population. When we look at student, tag student achievement data, we look at it as a whole. We haven't differentiated it by program. And since there are movement between programs and schools, we just, we haven't looked at it that way because of lack of human resources. And, but we, we could. I mean, the, the students in the neighborhood, the tag students in neighborhood programs are achieving at the, at a comparable level as our students in the Tag Center programs as measured by MSA and FAST. But there are also value-added measures that we don't measure that's above and beyond our assessments.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just follow up a little bit with Mr. Armwood's comments? So since student-based budgeting includes the high-achieving component essentially, that means that, so when you buy school, when you decide what their budget is, you identify based on the number of students or the percentage of students in the particular category?
It's the actual number.
So it's the actual number. So then you would be able to show that in school A, if they get a bump because of the high-achieving students, you would be able to show how you identified those students as being that? So it would include comprehensive and tag students?
Correct.
And you believe, I'm not putting words in your mouth, I'm asking you, you believe sort of backdoor, that most of those students would be tag identified? Or not necessarily?
Not necessarily. I mean, we have kids who are double advanced who aren't tag identified, and we have tag students who aren't double advanced. But the bulk of the tag students are double advanced.
Okay. So would you be able to say that you think most are or not necessarily?
Yeah, most are. But the, the challenge in student-based budgeting is, what criteria do we want to weigh? And which criteria do we not want to weigh?
Right.
So we really tried to capture things that we felt pretty confident around the data. There are multiple factors that we didn't weigh that we could have if we had been clever enough to figure out how to build an algorithm around that. And I'll give you an example. Kids who have behavior problems. Kids who have behavior problems suck up a lot of time in a school, but we didn't weigh that. I guess we could have used discipline referrals, but, you know, so those were the kind of questions as we developed the weights that we were trying to figure out. What, what can we feel confident, confident in using an algorithm for? And then how much money should we allot to it?
I just want to piggyback on that, too. The more weights you have, the less funding there is for the base amount for every student.
Right.
So you have to take that into consideration, too.
So, you know, not that, you know, not that, I don't know whether Superintendent's going to make any different recommendations before we vote, vote on the budget. But, so, but as we, as this being the first year, you'll be able to next year look and say, "Okay, this is how it worked for this year." And we will reassess, if you need to, how the weights are, are given. And I, I think it, it just weighs a little heavier because we do have now more tag identified centers than we've ever had, quite frankly. And, you know, eliminating that, that waitlist, it just seems that we may have to look at that a little different. I don't know. I'm asking the question, quite frankly.
It was interesting when we met with Baltimore City. Baltimore City did an assessment of incoming kindergarten students, and their performance in kindergarten followed them as a cohort through that school year. So whatever they did in that kindergarten, that's what their weight was for the next six years. We chose not to use that algorithm. So instead, Matt's team actually looks at the performance of the previous year, and then we attach the weights, so.
Okay. And then I guess finally, you know, the theme that seems to be, you know, resounding, and I don't want it to get lost, is that we do want to make sure that, you know, we shouldn't have these isolated incidents or pronounced incidents of kids in neighborhoods and in schools where none of the children in those areas are identified as tag. It's just, that's just impossible.
It doesn't happen. We have, we have tag students in, in, in every school. We have nominations in every school.
Okay. We did have in, with one school, though, two years ago, where it was a school designated as one of the twelve closures, although we only ended up closing eight, where not one child in that neighborhood went to that school.
Now, if they are all tag identified, and they all choose to apply the lottery and they get in, it's quite possible they could end up without a tag student. But they, they were identified as their home school.
But you're saying they were identified. And then one last thing, I'm sorry, Ms. Uvex, you're next. The other thing, can you just briefly or quickly go through the process, too, for those parents who request that their child be tested?
Screened?
Yes.
Okay. The window for parent and teacher nominations for screening goes from August to November. And they just have to put the request in writing to the tag coordinator. The dates are on the county website. We encourage the schools to put the, the dates, also share it with parents in their newsletters. But put the request in writing to the tag coordinator between August and November, and the tag coordinator will complete the process.
Okay. And then when they, and then they give the results to the parents and?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Ms. Uvex?
I have to get my button fixed. My question now has already been answered. Ms., Ms. Waller, we were on, on the same pace because we are in such a transient area. That was my question, under the mission statement, because I was looking at the mission statement. And then so many times where our kids, because they move back and forth because of their families, they get, you know, they kind of get missed. And I, we don't want that to happen, none of us do. My other question would be under the objective. The first thing says to provide regularly-scheduled opportunities for students to me- scheduled opportunities for students to meet with intellectual peers. How do you intend to do that? That was my question.
Well, in all of the schools, the, the program model addresses it. In the pullout program, the tag students are pulled together. Second and third graders are our primary group, so they're pulled together, and they work on the curriculum. In the TRC model, the tag students are clustered, seven to 10 in some cases. It could be larger clusters. And then, obviously, in the tag centers, the classes are all tag identified. Your point about the transient, I just want to clarify, if the students are identified as tag in their school, and then they, they move to another school and another school and another school, their tag coding follows them through SchoolMax. So, at any point, the coordinators, the principals, their, their, their tag code is, can be looked up in SchoolMax.
What, what if they came from a system and that had not been done? How would we pick that up once we?
Well, if they're new to our system and they're not in first and third grade, then it, again, it becomes incumbent upon a parent or a teacher to nominate them for, for testing and screening. If they're in first and third grade, that happens automatically.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your leadership in this area. I asked that question because a lot of parents don't understand the wording that we use, so I wanted you to explain it so they can understand it better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yu Banks. Ms. Higgins?
Yes, thank you. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding how we're funding tag, particularly in those comprehensive schools. So, I don't know if I'm looking to Dr. Arbogast, Mr. Stansky, or Ms. Jacksons. Let me just ask a question. If I'm understanding, I think I'm understanding that the weights that we give to high-performing students in a school are some of the way that we recognize tag students, and that since tag is locked, we also provide additional funding through the locked tag. Is that, am I correct in that?
Yes and no. Yes and no. So, you're correct with the first part, so that is?
They get $84 or $94?
Yeah, I mean, so the weights for the, for the, weights for the double advance, but the locked part of this conversation is only for those schools that are dedicated tag centers. So, that's over and above. So, at a comprehensive school that's also serving tag?
Right.
Then, those funds are coming from that double advance.
And that's $84 a student?
Correct.
I think, 84 or 94. Okay.
$93 a student.
Thank you. All right, and then, I'm sorry? Oh, did you want to, you want to wait or you want to jump in? Please.
I'm saying, that conflicts what I understood to be said earlier when I asked a question about tag funds and student-based budgeting, the tag identified student, is I thought you meant that that was a locked resource for a tag identified student wherever they are. So, they are getting their funding on the student-based budgeting from the advanced, not from the tag.
It would be very similar to science and tech, Mr. Armwood. So, a child in a science and tech center, those positions are locked for that center, and then they're on top of the per pupil amounts that they receive. So, students who are assessing, accessing a science program in their school, they would be funded a different way.
I do understand that. My concern really goes to those smaller schools that have several individuals, students identified for tag. They're now going through the pullout model, which draws down of the resources of that smaller school. They're having to fund that under the advanced weight, weighting factor. Is that correct? So, there is no tag lock, okay. Has anyone looked, I'll ask a question, has anyone looked at the impact on the schools?
Again, I'm sorry, there is locked resources for the centers?
For the centers. I do understand that.
Okay.
I do clearly understand that. I'm concerned about the smaller schools that have to service tag students.
But, so, Mr. Armwood, so we are actually addressing that on several other fronts as well. And Ms. Jackson, I'm not sure if I heard it mentioned, a couple of years ago, we, we began a partnership with Johns Hopkins, where we were really attempting to identify individuals to become talented and gifted certified. As a matter of fact, we had a group of individuals who?
We have 16 teachers in Title I schools that completed their, their certification.
So, and so, part of that, part of that is so that the teachers who are in or serving some of these schools actually have the talented and gifted certification so that they can provide that resource as well to those students who are talented and gifted.
In the neighborhood schools, the resources to run the, the neighborhood tag program, the additional materials, that historically has come from the central office tag budget, and will continue to do that. So, the, the materials required doesn't come from the school-based budget unless they choose to go above and beyond. If we have accelerated math students, then they just don't, they, they just need a different math textbook. They don't need two math textbooks. So, in some cases, the modifications are cost-neutral. But yes, there, there is a, a human, a human resource burden that you're pointing out with the pullout.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins, for yielding, and back to you.
Yeah, I just have one follow-up observation in this, and no, no way, I, I really applaud Dr. Height and his staff and you, Ms. Jackson, for increasing an underserved population in our student population and, and really working to, to be attentive to those tag students. I would encourage all of us, and I, I include myself in that, that we don't forget what comprehensive parents might hear as we talk about all, what the tag students are now receiving. And so, that in that conversation, we include what academic rigor we are providing for our comprehensive students. So, I'm going to look to you, Dr. Arbogast, to answer that question so that it's at least part of this discussion.
Was that a, was that a question or was it simply an acknowledgement that we need to be sensitive to that?
Well, I think you, you could say to, to all of us what the academic rigor for comprehensive students. As we look to be attentive to tag, we also haven't forgotten that most of our students are, in fact, comprehensive in what we offer them.
So, my response to that would be most of our energy has been around the rigor for the comprehensive students. And our rollout with Web's depth of knowledge, with our rollout of Common Core, it's about raising the tide for all students. Teresa has done a terrific job in keeping the tag population in sight, and she doesn't let us lose sight of them, and she's really good about that. But our, most of our efforts are really about raising tide for all kids, and how teachers are asking questions, the level of assignments the kids are doing, the access to rigorous coursework, I mean, these are, this is our daily work. So, I'm glad you brought that up to just remind the public that every day, we're focusing on raising the rigor for all students.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Mr. Burrows? Ms. Boston, I'm sorry. She was first. I apologize.
I have one more question. It's something one of my colleagues said, joked or something in my mind. I've had concerns from some of the parents under the new boundary changes that we just did, and some of their concerns about when their children having to move from one school to another and they're tag identified, and they're going into another school, that we be vigilant about the fact that, and you said that, that they will, it's on their, in the SchoolMax, that these kids actually be able to get back into, in that tag program if they actually go into another school because of a boundary change.
Absolutely.
That was some of the concerns that I've heard from parents about the boundary change. And I, I just wanted to just offer that comment that we actually be really vigilant about making sure those kids receive those same programs they're receiving from the other schools that they came from. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Boston. Mr. Burrows?
Hi, I had a question about the 101 tag pullout sites. Not every, you know, as I make my way through the community, I hear different concerns and different compliments about different tag programs, which leads me to believe that not every tag pullout site is the same or equal. So, how are we evaluating each tag pullout site? You know, these students are already achieving, able to perform on tests. My little sister's a tag student, you know, regardless of the teacher, she's going to perform well. But how are we monitoring to make sure that our students are actually being pushed and that we have the most effective tag coordinator at each pullout site? How are we making sure that, you know, the, the tag pullout in one part of the county is not different than the tag pullout in another part or school, vice versa?
It's a challenge. All of the program models vary from school to school. We have very successful programs, and then we have some that are struggling, that need more monitoring, more support. When it comes to the, the curriculum and the resources, that's consistent across the board. When it comes to implementation, that becomes the responsibility of the instructional leader in the building to monitor that improvement, and that it happens consistently. I would like to be able to, to, to give you even more of an answer to say that we can, we do annual evaluations. We get annual anecdotal feedback from our coordinators in order to adjust and make changes. And as we have challenges, as our coordinators and pullout teachers and principals reach out to us, we support them in helping them solve the problems creatively. But to be able to, there's a lot of flexibility in the pullout program. We don't lay it out to just give them a scope and sequence, and it's very tied to the school days. So, it, we allow them the flexibility so that their students can drive that instruction. So, I could walk into a pullout school at Judge, or pullout session at Judge Woods and see something a little bit different than I might see at another pullout school, but it's because of the students' passion and interest. So, we're never going to see the same thing on the same day in any pullout program. The students are driving that instruction.
And so, each tag coordinator supervisor, it comes under what office?
The, the, the pull, the pullout teachers? Like I said earlier, they're, they have, their, their positions can vary. I mean, we have reading specialists that are delivering the pullout curriculum. We train them every year on the curriculum that they're delivering. We do provide them with the resources and the necessary support, but it, it's, it's the school's responsibility, the administrators, to, to monitor the delivery of the services.
And they report that back to you?
At the, we do a beginning of the year report and an end of the year report, yes. We keep track of their schedules. We ask them to report when they're meeting. It could be Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday, so it can vary from school to school. They do have flexibility.
And if it's not a rigorous program, you make adjustments?
There's room for adjustments. For example, part of the pullout curriculum is independent research and guided independent study, and there's opportunity, if it's for, for the students to spend four weeks on it or eight weeks on it, depending on their passion, depending on the topics they've explored, depending on the process. We had a group at Hybridge two years ago that researched, had, did a medical research project, and they brought in, and, and did a medical panel to present their research. So, it took them longer than it would take another school who did individual projects.
I just want to make sure that one school tag pullout is not getting an additional homework assignment, whereas another tag pullout site is doing research, medical research?
The, the core curriculum is the same for pullout, okay? The independent study component can vary from student to student because it's based on student interest. So, that could, that will vary. The junior grade book shared inquiry discussion, that, that's a part of all of our tag programs. So, all the components are the same.
So, are they, are the students tested on those components that are taught throughout the year?
They're informally evaluated. They're not tested, they're, they're tested, they're evaluated on their assignments as they go.
I'm trying to make sure that they're, so, I realize that the, the pullout teacher is formally evaluating them, but I want to be able to look countywide, across the board, to make sure that all students, regardless of their location, are being successful, and an informal evaluation would not be able to accomplish that, if that makes sense.
You want to standardize assessment for the pullout program?
I'm not saying that, but I, I, I want to know that regardless of where a student is, regardless what district, that they're getting the same instruction and that we're able to evaluate that at the district level versus an informal teacher-to-student, you know, evaluation, if that makes sense.
Yeah, Mr. Burrows, that's not a separate evaluation just for the purpose of tag. That would be part of what we do as a, as a part of our teacher evaluation across the system. So, the fact that these individuals have received training in tag, then that becomes a part of the formal evaluation process.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I'll talk to you guys more about that. I realize my buzzer is ringing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Okay, colleague, Mr. Armwood, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. One more question. You mentioned tag coding follows a student throughout the system. Does that tag coding follow the student throughout the state? Because our students leave jurisdictions.
No. The 24 school districts in Maryland, some do formal identification and some don't. And we all, and we have, we follow the national standards for identification. Prince George's County has received accolades for our identification process, but we don't, we don't control the policy of another county. Some counties may not recognize it while others would. When we have students from other districts come into our county, we evaluate their screening paperwork from their previous district and, but we make them meet our criteria. So, we could possibly use some of their assessment data, but they do have to go through our criteria in order to be consistent in our district, but across the state, there's not.
Thank you. The comments, I, I'm probably saying the name incorrectly, the universal identifier, student identifier that is coming online, or is that already online? Does not capture?
Yeah, the unique identifier.
Unique identifier.
Yes, it does not capture identification of talented and gifted, Mr. Armwood, because there, at the moment, there are no criteria across the state for how identification takes place. We are identifying, many of the other school systems that are our size are identifying, but I'm not so sure all of our rural partners are, are using the process of identification. That's consistent with ours. So, there's no state-prescribed identification process for talented and gifted that each system uses.
Is there any chance, when you talk to MSDE, they didn't move in that direction? Or is that something best left alone?
We've actually been talking about that, and we have, naturally, we're getting pushback from some of the Eastern Shore districts because they see it as an unfunded mandate, but it is, we're talking about the process for identifica, for identifying students and teacher certification. So, we're talking about both of those things as a part of what is prescribed and identified as, as relates to criteria from MSDE. But we're still in that process of working through that with the 24 jurisdictions in Maryland.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. I think that concludes our questions. Thank you so much for the, Ms. Higgins.
Except I could just say that Ms. Johnson is going to be terribly sorry she missed this conversation, so, thank you.
I suspect she might be watching, but then maybe not because she'd be sending us questions to ask. Thank you so much. That was a great presentation. I think we got a lot of information, and we'll be looking forward to the follow-ups for next morning.
Thank you.
Colleagues, guess what? We still have special ed to go over. Next?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That brings us to item 6.2. First, before we begin special education, I, too, want to thank Curriculum Instruction and Teresa Jackson and her team for tremendous work that they've done with respect to talented and gifted. So, thank you for your leadership in that department. And speaking of leadership, we have Joan Rothgab, who is our Director of Special Education. She's joined today by Teresa O'Connor, and they will be doing a presentation to the Board of Education on special education. So, at this time, I yield to Ms. Rothgab.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Height, colleagues, and community. I appreciate the opportunity to share the work that is being done by the Department of Special Education. We have many successes to share and some challenges that we all face. Our mission aligns with the school systems initiatives and our master plan and our PMAP Core services. It is to provide specialized instruction and related services. It is to provide specialized instruction and related services to students with disabilities birth to 21, to ensure that the rights of students with disabilities are protected and that we follow federal and state regulatory requirements and that we provide support to our parents, guardians, and families of children with disabilities. Our vision is also to provide a continuum of services where diversity is honored in all students, and we have very diverse students with disabilities. And those students are fully engaged in a program of instruction that is universally designed for learning. So who do we serve? The October 2011 child count was 14,325 students captured in the red on the slide. That is approximately 11.5% of the total school enrollment. The majority of those students are birth to, are six to 21. However, we have outstanding preschool services for our students who are three to five years old and number 1,476 who are being served through an IEP. And then there are 96 students whose parents have chosen to extend their services that concluded after age three on an extended IFSP, which is an individualized family service plan. Additionally, in the purple at the bottom, you'll see that birth to three children are number 1,042. So we also service those children, but they're not considered students in our child count because of course they are birth to three years old. And they receive their services in their home settings, natural settings, preschools, and childcare. All of these services are provided by more than 1,600 special educators, school psychologists, program coordinators, more than 800 paraeducators, and 200-plus related service providers such as occupational therapists, physical therapists, assistive technology, deaf and hard of hearing specialists, et cetera. So who do we serve by disability code? I thought of interest to you would be to break down the 14 federally defined disabilities under IDEA. Over the last eight years, many areas have remained constant in terms of numbers of students, such as students with learning disabilities and students with intellectual disabilities. But you'll see a noticeable jump in students with autism, which of course is a national trend I'm sure you're familiar with and have followed as the identification of students with autism has occurred. Other health impairment has also increased from 7% to 12% as has developmental delay. You'll notice a drop in students identified as multiply disabled. And that really came about because of a clarification in, from the feds that said multiple disabilities must include intellectual disability as part of the multiple disabilities. So you see, we still service those students, but their primary disability may have changed from multiple disability to intellectually disabled or to learning disabled. In the case of the decline in speech and language, sometimes during our reevaluation conferences, it's clarified that the student's disability is not just impacted by a speech and language delay, but in fact a language learning disability. So we change the disability during reevaluation from speech and language disabled to learning What services do we provide? Well, of course, we provide assessment and identification, critical to students with disabilities. We provide, of course, individualized instruction. We provide related services, which I've already mentioned, and support services. We provide services for our procedural safeguards, making sure of the implementation of the IEP and engaging and mediation and due process when needed. And of course, we provide parent support through professional guidance and partnership. I'll speak more to our parent engagement later in the presentation. So how do we provide our services? Keeping in mind that special education is a service and not a place, it's critical to provide instructional services in the least restrictive environment. This means education, an educational environment that meets the needs of students in accordance with their IEPs and to the maximum extent appropriate, those students are in an educational setting with their non-disabled peers. So of course, there's a continuum of services from our least restrictive setting, which is our regular classroom with perhaps consultative supports, to our special schools, which focus on additional supports that our child might need to be successful. In fact, there are students who require services outside the public school system in non-public schools, which again, I'll address later in the presentation. We also have services in specialized programs. These programs are located throughout the county and again, they provide the additional supports in a public school setting according to the student's IEP. Services such as that are provided in the autism programs where students have intensive social skill training, but they also have the ability to be included with their general education peers. In our CRI programs, for example, a critical component is our community-based instruction. So when the students are learning in their curriculum, it becomes all that more relevant when they go out to the community and have community experiences. And in our ED programs, our, our programs for students with emotional disabilities, we include counseling and mental health services. And I'm very proud of the collaboration we have with the University of Maryland in providing our mental health initiative. A quick glance at this chart gives you an idea of all the services that we provide for students. These programs support our most challenged learners and provide additional instruction and interventions to promote student success. And I'll divert from my script just a moment to share that prior to coming to our presentation today, I heard from a parent in one of our specialized programs. And so frequently, of course, we hear from parents who have very serious concerns. This parent took the time to call me to share with me that she has had, and her child has had such success in our deaf and hard of hearing program at Thomas Claggett. The child is about to move on from sixth grade into our middle grades year, but it was very exciting to hear from a parent and that she took the time to call me and share with me all of the success that she's had and that her daughter, more importantly, has had by participating in our deaf and hard of hearing program at Thomas Claggett. So the Department of Special Education keeps student achievement as a center focus always. Our puzzle really demonstrates the components that go into student achievement as our main focus. So we'll begin with response to intervention. Tracking interventions that students receive is so critical. Watching that progress allows us to see when a student requires yet additional interventions. In previous years, unfortunately, there was a time when students almost were required to fail before they got services. But response to intervention allows us to measure very carefully the progress made and then identify if a student needs additional services. That way, their self-esteem doesn't have to be completely deflated. We recognize the challenges and we do more to respond to their needs. Another component that keeps student achievement at the middle, but sometimes is considered more of a compliance issue, is our corrective action plans. And really, we're hoping that folks can begin to see, and our staff can begin to see, and our system can begin to see corrective action as more of an, through an instructional lens. Because really corrective actions can help drive our professional development and self-audit when we need to audit our own processes. Universal design for learning. UDL is really, to academic barriers, what ADA was to physical barriers. It really allows access to all learners to the curriculum. So we're excited about adding universal design components and including the principles of UDL in all of our lesson plans and working with general education curriculum in understanding the principles of UDL. And I have more on that again, later in the presentation. Inclusive opportunities. While means was just the beginning, some of you are familiar with making education accessible in neighborhood schools. It was an initiative and continues to be an initiative that focused on bringing children from a more restrictive public school setting back into a general education setting in their neighborhood area. And our focus on inclusion continues to be reinforcing that we're preparing the environment for the learner, not readying the learner for the environment. So we want to build capacity of our general ed teachers and our special educators to increase our inclusive opportunities. And finally, again, focusing on a service delivery model, which provides a continuum of services for students with individualized education plans. So how are we doing? Let's begin by looking at the performance of our kindergarten students. This, this, these are children with disabilities as compared to children without disabilities. Here, we are specifically measuring school readiness, components such as social, emotional areas, language and literacy, math reasoning and math readiness, and physical development. This shows that 54% of our children with disabilities were fully ready for school in the 2010-11 year, and that was measured by our Maryland Model for School Readiness Assessment. This was a 37-point gain from '01-'02 and a 14-point gain just from last year. Keep in mind that the children with the disabilities who are identified at ages three and four obviously have significant delays, else they wouldn't go through the child find process. So although there's still a gap, there's significant progress. Special education performance in grades three to eight over the last eight years. As you see, with few exceptions, we've been moving in the right direction. In grade three and four, I believe it's orange and yellow on the slide, you can see we're making slow, steady progress. Grade five, which I believe is a green line, we made an incredible jump of 26 points in school year '08, perhaps a result of interventions that were delivered with fidelity over the years. Grade six also had a big jump in '07 with a 13-point increase and a slight decrease in performance last year. Grade seven started very weak with weak performance in school year '04 and has made a big jump in '08 of 15 points. Grade eight in the red made a nice gain in the school year '09, and if you follow along with your finger as you're looking at your laptops, you can see that the performance of our grade eighth students in reading have leveled off over the last two years. Certainly, this performance isn't where we'd like to be, but we should recognize the gains that have been made and the improvement since 2003. So we should look at trend data over the last three years. So now look, oops, we're going math. Did I skip math? Okay, let's look at our math performance in grades three through eight of students with disabilities. Oh, you're on the right slide. Okay, over the last eight years. Again, over the years, looking at red, yellow, and green lines on the graph, you'll see three through five grades, slow and steady growth, although grades three and four did take a slight dip of three points last year. We saw a big jump in '07 of 14 points. During the '07 year, there was a significant growth in grade six in both reading and math. Not sure of the factors contributing to that jump, perhaps because of curriculum adjustments in the middle grades and middle school, better identification of students participating in the mod assessments, and therefore better on this particular assessment, and perhaps increased interventions. Grade seven, if you follow that blue line, making tremendous progress. While grade eight performance continues to be an area of concern, not only for our students with disabilities, but also for general education. Now our trends. So looking at the trend data over just the last three years, we have growth in mathematics, which is on the left side of your chart, grades three through seven. We hope to follow that with grade eight soon. Growth in reading on the right side of the chart at all grade levels, particular strides in grade seven. Overall, with the exception of grade eight in math, where perhaps algebraic content increases significantly and our students with disabilities struggle a little bit more with that, that might attribute to the decrease in the grade eight mathematics, but achievement of students with disabilities suggests very positive trends. Other important data to review is that of students participating in our alt MSA assessments. These students participate in a portfolio assessment, so it's an assessment over time. The students are generally identified with intellectual disabilities or autism and have, and their disability significantly impact their performance. The trend over the last three years suggests gains in both reading and mathematics, again with the exception of grade three and four in reading last year. Many issues have been raised about the alternative assessments, including the fact that student performance can sometimes be impacted by human error, such as an artifact being entered with an incorrect date, a date that might be a Saturday or Sunday. That artifact is thrown out and the student's performance is then scored as basic. We did see this as a possible issue in the performance in school year 10. Our final data slide addresses high school performance, again, of students with disabilities as compared to their general education peers. Clearly, we are not where we want to be. However, the trend data from '08 shows algebra on the left, which increases by almost five points compared to the general education increase of .6 points, a fraction of a point. English on the right, where general education decreased the number of proficient and advanced by 4.3, students with disabilities in fact increased their performance by 5.6 points. We're concerned, but again, we should recognize the growth. We're closing the gap between the achievement of general education and special education performance at the high school level. So what's impacting this change? What's making a difference for our students? Two years ago, Executive Cabinet charged us with developing some reform charters. Special education became a priority for our school system, and appropriately so. We chose these three areas, areas of discipline, college and career ready, RTI, UDL, and differentiated instruction to focus our reform charters. Other areas we think are making a difference for our students? Implementations of our interventions. We have leveled literacy in every elementary school. We have KIMS and Kies on math intervention in our middle schools and high schools. IStation is a reading intervention at the elementary level for students with disabilities. Read 180 is a reading intervention implemented in our high schools. Journeys is a reading intervention implemented in our middle schools and high schools, and Gizmos is a science intervention that we've been working very closely with curriculum and instruction and learning more about and implementation. We have several MSDE competitive grants that are making a difference in terms of performance of our students with disabilities. We have some technology tools that I'm going to share in the next few slides. And I think that you would all agree that focused professional development makes a difference for our students. So if there's one factor that impacts student achievement, it is training highly effective educators and particularly special educators with content expertise. We've also increased our numbers of crisis intervention resource teachers in targeted middle schools and high schools. Those are schools that had high suspension rates. We're attempting to be proactive by adding the crisis teachers who can help to de-escalate behavior before it becomes an issue. I mentioned several online tracking tools. This one, the RTI online tracking tool, has a wonderful history. As you know, the Administrative Policy 5124 is a policy that tracks school instructional teams and interventions and supplemental services team referrals. This was always a paper-driven process. Because of some collaboration with our friends Because of some collaboration with our friends in IT and focus groups where principals said no, we would like to participate in this also because we know how critical it is to track interventions, we developed an online tracking tool. With the advent of this instrument, schools can now document the progress of students pretty efficiently through all the grades, and if a student moves from one school to another, all they need to do is put in the student number or the student name, and they will know all of the interventions that have been attempted and used and the progress the students made by just using this electronic tool. I'm proud to share that we developed this in Prince George's County, and we have been asked to present at a national conference later in the spring to share with everyone in the country how you can develop an RTI online tracking tool, with limited resources, I might add. So hats off to my friends in IT for help with their development on that. Another electronic resource that will prove to be invaluable to all school teams is the Prince George's County UDL website. This site was developed through a grant by special education staff and assistive technology specialists in collaboration with some web designers and, of course, the gurus of Universal Design for Learning, an organization referenced as CAST out of Harvard University. As you can see from this screenshot, its design aligns with the principles of UDL in that it minimizes barriers to our learning about UDL through this multi-sensory approach. If you glance at the menu bar on the left, which you can barely see but probably on your laptops, you'll notice that they show tools and resources for UDL. It has lesson planning process, which we will definitely use as we create more lessons who are common core, and of course, the principles themselves of UDL are noted. I encourage you to explore this wonderful site created by your own, for your own use, and for the community's use. So a more low-tech issue related to student performance are keys to success to support achievement for our challenged learners. And there are basically three areas that can really capture it rather succinctly, and that's principal support, high-quality instruction, and focused professional development. I particularly appreciate the bottom square of principal support where it emphasizes the need to collaboratively plan and to have special education and others at the table as we look at data and adjust our instruction as it relates to data. Our work can't be done alone. It's done in collaboration with our partners, our partners in the school system. We have collaborated with our offices to increase success for all of our students and strengthen supports to our teachers. So just to name a few, curriculum and instruction has collaborated with us on professional development in that they have encouraged and invited and actually made sure that special educators participate in professional development in the content areas, a critical need for our special educators. And I appreciate the collaboration and support we've received from curriculum and instruction. They're also instrumental in helping us when we design grants, particularly content-related grants. Human Resources is a partner because you know that we have a critical shortage of special educators, and they need to go out and help us recruit teachers and place them in appropriate special education placements. Student Services has been an incredible partner this year as we've tried to tackle our issues around discipline and discrepancies in disciplinary removal of students with disabilities. They've been instrumental in helping us understand our bullying policies and as they relate to students with disabilities, and counseling services for our students with IEP. The Office of General Counsel, of course, is available to consult with us because special education does come with some due process concerns, and we appreciate the support that we get from the General Counsel's office. As I mentioned before, there are some students who require non-public placement. I'm happy to share with you that this slide depicts a decrease in expenditures from fifty-six million dollars to forty-six million dollars in just three years, although Prince George's County share has increased slightly because it is all dependent on what MSDE and the state contributes. So non-public expenditures are very dependent on the state contribution. So we have to be very cautious when we look at our budget in terms of monies allocated to non-public student tuition and attendance. I also just want to bring to your attention in the bottom box that in fiscal year oh-nine, we had one thousand twenty-four students who were leaving our county to go to non-public placements, and because of enhancements we've made in our public programs, we have now lessened that number by two hundred and thirty-seven for a non-public enrollment of two, seven hundred and eighty-seven students currently. Before leaving this slide, I do want you to note that the primary disability of students that are going to non-public schools is that of emotional disabilities and autism is the other disability. So as we look to expand programs for students with disabilities, we should specifically look at things that would support components needed to support these populations. Another very important aspect of the work of the Department of Special Education is parent engagement. We work to increase the involvement through our parent center activities and focused workshops. We look to increase funding through grant applications, and we actively engage our stakeholders to share responsibility in the education of students with disabilities. We're very proud of our responsiveness to our parents. We receive many expressed concerns from parents of students with disabilities, as would be expected, and we respond in a timely manner and an informative manner. As we get, dig a little closer into special education, we can't ignore the fact that we have been cited with, by MSDE for some corrective actions. And we had seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven areas of corrective action. I count because I'm very excited to share with you that parent surrogacy, provision of fate, and secondary transition, all areas that the state had said we were in corrective action, have been closed as of December. But I'm even more excited to share that yesterday I called the state and I said, how are we doing on that initial evaluation timeline? And they shared with me that that corrective action is also closed. So we have met the federal and state regulatory requirements for timelines around initial evaluations. So now we need to work on those three final corrective action plans. There are many community partners with whom we work, beginning on the bottom left, you'll see CCAC, the Special Education Citizens Advisory Council. This is a group that's actually, is charged by the legislature to advise the Director of Special Education on critical issues. We have a very active CCAC, of which I'm proud to work. They have focused on areas such as transportation of students with disabilities, resolving parent concerns at the schoolhouse level, issues related to curriculum in the CRI programs, and support of initiatives such as Universal Design for Learning. I can't address each and every partner as you look across the list, but I will share that we are a better department and a better school system because of the commitment they have with us. I wouldn't be a good presenter today if I didn't give you some homework. I encourage each of you to explore this resource developed by our partners at Johns Hopkins University. We have presented this tool to our principals, to our parents, to our associate superintendents, and our leadership, and we continue to present it to schools. Maryland Learning Links is free and a vital resource to us. Please go to the site, and whenever you're interested in learning more about special education and related areas, click any of those links. It is an incredibly user-friendly site, and if the Board of Education would like some additional training, we can provide that for you. Finally, I've shared many of our successes and some of our challenges. In closing, I think I need to, before I take questions, stress two. One, I'm sure you've heard, as I hear every time I meet with teachers and go into schools, Joan, we need time. Teachers need time to collaboratively plan, time to process and develop good lesson plans, to deliver interventions with fidelity, and to complete the mandated paperwork. This is a real issue, which I don't have the answer, but I ask for your support as we collaborate to see what we can do to provide teachers with the time needed to be effective educators. The other challenge for the Department of Special Education and for our school system is the fact that we have a critical shortage of special educators. Our Human Resources Department works very hard in filling those vacancies, but I ask that you take just a few minutes, three minutes, I think, is this video, and please view this video with me so that we can take the message to everyone, be a special educator.
Our kids are the hothouse flowers. They're, they're special, beautiful people that inspire us in very different ways. I really believe that.
It has been not a battle, but a wonderful journey trying to help Jerry get where he is today and looking forward to where he's going.
We need a new generation of teachers.
To join those who are already making a difference in the classrooms.
Become a special education teacher.
Special ed teachers collectively, they didn't just teach me about hope for him and how he would grow, they taught me about hope for me.
Because you don't just change that child's education, you change their life, you change their family's life, you help support them to put them towards independence. And quality of life is not only having quality of life for yourself, but helping enhance the quality of life of someone else.
Actually, I think my quality of life is better than some other people because I can come home at the end of the day and say, you know, I think I really made a difference. And to me, that improves my quality of life.
And just like any other job, there are positives and negatives, but my highs are higher than I think almost any other type of work.
Who was your favorite teacher?
Well, it's my English teacher. I'm sixteen, and I'm in the tenth grade. Every time I go in there, I just say, I need some help, and she'll just smile and all. But I make her laugh. She thinks I'm smart.
It's a job I love. It's what I want to be doing. I hope that we can get more men out there. Students who have special needs, there's more boys than girls.
As we've been sitting here, my son has just been doing laps for the last, like, ten minutes, and, and he gets like that in this classroom, and his teacher will come and take him out of the classroom, and she'll take the assignments that he's supposed to be doing, and then she'll just talk to him. The whole time, they're just doing laps around the school, but it's because she's thinking outside the box and not making him have to conform.
Dear Miss Dean, I highly appreciate all your work and support. I would never make it without you. She had burned a whole lot of bridges. She was emotionally disturbed. The principal's like, what are we gonna do with this kid? I don't know if this is the right, right placement for her. And I was like, well, give me a minute. These are the kids that we really need to serve. She graduates, and she's gonna start college in the fall. So I can see this kid moving from, you know, no, no one wants to deal with her to, okay, he can have a future.
That's what I work for. That's, that's just to see a student go like, wow, I can do something with my life. What other job can you say you go into and you're laughing and you're having so much fun and you're actually making a difference in the world?
There's a personality characteristic that, that the best special educators seem to have. There's this, there's this genuine, like, deep curiosity. They're, they're trying to figure out the puzzle that is your child. When they can do that, that's where the progress happens.
My success is really attributed to the fact that my general education teachers, as well as the special education teachers, really listened to what I was saying, that I could do anything the other non-disabled children were doing.
Once they get that special teacher, they can soar. Because I've watched my daughter go from sitting in kindergarten for a whole year, not doing nothing. She couldn't even write her name, and then getting into that enriched environment and going to the moon and back. I've seen it happen.
My whole life became difficult because of my learning disability. I've kind of given up on myself. The special education teacher that helped me the most's name was Alex. Alex helped me gain confidence in myself and realize that I am a better person than that, and I can do, I can do anything that anybody else can do. I think I can be Alex in someone's life.
I have a child who they said wouldn't be able to walk, and he walks. They said he wouldn't talk. I can't shut him up. I'm so grateful for the teachers who have believed in him, because they too believe
Become a special education teacher.
Become a special education teacher.
Become a special education teacher.
Teach.
Thank you. I couldn't resist sharing that presentation, that video with you, as it does provide a very powerful message for all of us. And with that, ready to entertain? Any questions the board might have?
Now, that presentation is indeed a special education presentation.
Thank you.
I mean, it really stands out. The presentation was, was really great. We really appreciate the colorful ways in which you gave us the information. Ms. Higgins and I were talking about that because we got so used to the, the blue slides for every presentation, but that was really a great presentation. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins.
I have stories one way or the other about special needs students, and it's just such an area that, that is so important and that we look at as a district and want to make sure that we're preparing all students. So when we're talking about college readiness and career readiness, we need to make sure that we're also making sure that we're including all students in that. My list is Ms. Beck, Ms. Boston, Mr. Burrows, and Ms. Higgins.
And actually, I, I was just writing questions as we were going through. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll share a couple of them, but then I'll follow up with questions that can then be followed up and not take as much time. But I'm happy to say that I'm in, one semester, I am going to be the mother of a special ed teacher. So I'm real proud of that. She's at Bowie State, and so I'm not becoming a teacher, but I'm becoming a mother of one.
Have a link for her to our HR.
Oh, I wouldn't want to forward her to HR. That would, isn't that against the law or something? I think I'm, I might be a little too obsessed about comparing where we are to neighboring jurisdictions, the state. I know at one point, we, we kind of had a bad name that we were over-identifying and that a larger percentage of our students were labeled as tag, or tag, special needs. And so I'd like some follow-up on how we compare with other systems and then the state as a whole. In terms of Slide twenty-one, the non-public information, which was just overwhelming, what is the current MSDE share contribution? I know that there was some discussion about them phasing back their, their share. And what strategies are being used to get these, this type of data, the reductions? What are we doing so that we're down into the seven hundreds of students that are leaving our district? Are we Are we doing something to keep, they're still identifying, but are we keeping them here? Are we servicing them in the less restrictive, in their neighborhood schools? So I'm, I'm interested in that strategy. In terms of our charter schools, how are our charter schools in terms, because they're lottery-based, and I know that last year we had some concerns with one of our charters not being able to service the number of students that they had. So how, what percentage of special needs students are in our charters? Because as a lottery-based program, I'm not so certain that parents naturally think of that as a good mix for their child. They might be self-taking them out of the lottery program. In terms of student-based budgeting, where special needs funds are locked now, isn't, is Baltimore City locking them? No. Or, um, they've unlocked them. Okay, so that's, that's kind of the, I'll turn this way. I think I need more help on understanding how they've unlocked them. And I know they stepped in as locked, but I would have some concerns about unlocking because of the mandates and because you don't really want to unlock for the most fragile students in the system. And I don't know if that's, if we're using Baltimore City as a pilot and we're just going to watch their unlocking of special education, or if that's going to be at some point the goal to get to unlock them.
We, we, we're using them as a district to learn from. They're not the roadmap for how we want to carry out student-based budgeting. It's, I'm not sure the decisions that they made and the reasons why they chose to unlock the positions in special education. I suspect they think that by reallocating those funds across the district, they could still serve those students. I don't know, but we thought that it was imperative for us to have those positions dedicated for that purpose, until we see such, until we see data that would suggest doing it a different way. Right now, data was not compelling enough, and we see this as an area of real need for us.
Right. And finally, how is the University of Maryland partnering? What, you mentioned them as one of our partners, and I've been over there with one of the programs, the Parent and Child Program, and I've seen that, but I don't know, I mean, I'd be interested in the, you know, the specifics of what they're actually doing with us. And then I don't expect answers until the follow-up section of the agenda. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Hathaway Beck. Many of those are, of course, excellent questions. I can address, address just a few. One is in terms of the numbers as it relates to other jurisdictions. And I would like to share that we still struggle with including our students in a comprehensive or general education classroom. And I think one of the things that happens, as, as we increase our numbers of students who are, would be referred to non-public placements, we do need a very intensive program to service their needs. So it's kind of a double-edged sword when the state is looking at us to have more inclusive practices, also looking at us to decrease our numbers of non-public students. So we have to work with all of those. We want to meet the needs of our students in our county and also provide inclusive opportunities. But we still do have the highest number in the state of students in, down there with Baltimore City, of students who are in separate class settings as opposed to inclusive settings. And that is the data. How did we decline these, how did these numbers of non-public decline? I do think that we did build capacity of special education teachers and everybody, actually. We've had such support from Dr. Arbogas and the instructional directors and the associate superintendents, and having principals understand what it takes to keep a student in a public school setting. And we've added resources, but we've also had some conversations that have clarified for administration how we can increase the capacity of teachers to instruct our students in a general ed setting. So I do believe we're keeping our, our students here. The state contribution did decrease, so that did cause our expenditures to, to go up. But overall, as we continue to decrease in numbers, that's, mitigates that issue. The Mental Health Initiative is a University of Maryland collaboration. We're focused on providing mental health services again, maybe a reason why we're able to keep some of our students with emotional disabilities in a public school setting. And so they deliver services in our elementary schools and some middle schools that have significant numbers of students with emotional disturbance, but they also disabilities. They also have the partnership with our Early Childhood Program, and I'll have to get more information from Diane Benani, our coordinating supervisor, and get that to you. I have also, in meeting with other directors, spoken with the director of Baltimore City about student-based budgeting, and we, I think we have a lot to learn. One of the things that I found quite interesting is that they, as they looked at unlocking the special ed component, they did allocate more to a student who is fully included, because it is expensive to fully include a student with a disability. So I found that interesting, as opposed to the students with the higher needs being in a separate setting, to fully include a student, as we saw with some of our previous programs, is expensive.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. I called up Ms. Boston.
Hello. I too was really moved by the, the video that you did. It really touched me. I mean, I have a granddaughter that has special needs, so, I mean, that could have been the story of her as I looked at it, because she came in through the system, through Childfind, Wheatley, and she's now in high school. At middle school, she stayed on the honor road, hold, two years she was on there. So I do know with how great our system is for our children with special needs.
Thank you, Ms. Boston.
Yes, and I know you're doing a great job, Ms. Higgins. One of the things that I, I noticed on the slide, there was the admission of grades nine and 11. How are we evaluating the growth of those students? I know that they don't necessarily take the MSA, so, but how are we evaluating their growth?
Well, I don't have the data with me, but they do participate in all of our FAST assessments. So we could look at the ninth grade performance and 11th grade performance. We were specifically looking at performance on our high school assessments, which are generally in 10th grade.
Because I'm concerned, because after the 11th grade, most of our special needs kids that are in the comprehensive schools, they don't get some of them services once they get into the 12th grade. And so I want to know if they're, you know, actually ready for the 12th grade, because I'm, you know, I'm concerned, because there's no safety nets there in place once they get into 12th grade.
Well, actually, there are consultative services available to students with IEPs. So the case managers in the high schools still have the students with, you know, who have IEPs on their case role, case management. So there is some collaboration with the general educator in terms of appropriate accommodations and modifications that should be made for a student who's in 12th grade. Additionally, we have an intensive resource model for, at the high school level, as part of our service delivery model. We also have co-teaching in selected classes. But when, we also have the Academic Resource Support Class, and that is a class at the middle school and high school level for students who don't require, could be in a more rigorous curriculum perhaps, and don't require the co-teaching services, but could go to the Academic Resource Support Class one time a day, all through high school if needed, not just in 12th grade, to get additional support. So although you may not see direct services for a 12th grade student, there are certainly availability of direct service in an Academic Resource Support Class as opposed to in their co-teach content class.
Yes, my granddaughter is actually in every class. I think she has intensive class, a co-tour class, and she's in some comprehensive classes. So I, I do understand that process.
Sounds like we're meeting unique needs.
But one of the things that, one of the things that I do see as a problem, and periodically we go and we sit in on some of her classes, because we just want to see how the lessons are being taught. And sometimes we find it kind of disheartening that some of the teachers, especially the comprehensive teachers, if it's not a co-tour class, do not follow the IEPs or do not look. So one of the questions, when you look on and, and find out what their, what's on their, their IEPs and what their accommodations are, when you spoke of the RTI that's on, that online tool, is this available to all of the teachers and not just our special ed teachers?
Well, RTI is certainly available to all of our system and all of our teachers. And it is measuring an intervention that's attempted with a child or a student, and then the progress monitoring occurs, and then instruction is adjusted. And that's what RTI is. Right now, our focus with the online tracking tool is really at the elementary level, and we hope to expand that to middle school and high school. But yes, RTI, tiers of interventions are available to every student at every level. We do need to do extensive training on response to intervention for all of our teachers, but it is available.
Thank you, Ms. Boston.
Yes. Yeah, if it's around to, I'll exit all the questions.
Go ahead.
No, no, go on.
Okay. Mr. Burrows?
How are you?
Fine, Mr. Burrows.
I want to thank you for the presentation and a lot of information, and once I graduate school, I will be a teacher, and I've never considered going into special ed, so we'll, I'll take that under consideration.
Can we roll that video again?
But I won't be in the school system, but, well, this, well, never mind. On Slide three, it mentions birth to age three children. Do we get money from the state for those students?
Well, it's generally collaboration with the Prince George's County Health Department, and it is grant-funded. And so birth to three, again, it's grant-funded, and the lead agency in those services is our Prince George's County Department of Health, or Health Department. So we do provide all the positions for that, those services, however.
Okay, so we brought this out.
We use our staffing for birth to three, yes.
And on Slide six, it talks about procedural safeguards, implementation of IEP, mediation and due process, and parental support. Can you, can you go into detail about what type of parental support and what type of procedural safeguards?
Well, I would, yes, I certainly can, and those are both great questions. I, I need to recognize that the Department of Special Education is very large, and we have many coordinating supervisors and supervisors who take a big role in this. And so I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Mary Bell in terms of her work with our Parents' Center. She's in, in our room today. So she coordinates the services for our Parents' Center. And we have several staff members who are, you know, work with our parents to get additional support. So when they have questions about, you know, what is an IEP, or how I'm concerned about my student's placement, or I'm not sure if I don't need a paraeducator in my, in my students' rooms, those calls frequently, if not addressed at the schoolhouse level, are addressed through the Parents' Center. One of the staff members is Beth Diete. The Parents' Center is located at Judy Hoyer Family Learning Center. So that's only one of the many resources. I mean, we have resources for parents who are, speak Spanish, and we have lots of resources for them, and all of our documents are available for parents who need that kind of support. It's just endless, the amount of parent support that we are able to provide through this one Parents' Center. So we want the word out. Unfortunately, sometimes when we have professional development that's geared towards our parent, our parents, we don't have as much participation as we'd like. And we've had several Saturday trainings, and we've worked with Mr. Coleman at advertising some of our parent support programs. So there's lots there. The procedural safeguards are really about the rights of students who are identified with a disability and have an IEP. So every time there's a meeting at the schoolhouse level, really, our special educators at the school and the case managers of the students are trained to go through the procedural safeguards. Your right to an evaluation, your child's right to IEP services, your right, if you disagree, how to file for due process. And in fact, we provide information, resources when parents want someone outside the school system to be a resource.
So for the Parents' Center, not a lot of parents know about it at all. I receive, and I'm new to this, to this side of what we do. You know, you know, I have siblings in the school system. I have one that has been addressed by this, and this Parents' Center is not something that, you know, a lot of parents know about, at least mine didn't. And I guess during that meeting, when, when they first need to, to evaluate the student, if that information could be given to parents, that would be really helpful.
Well, the procedural safeguards, it's actually a document, and on the document, I mean, there's a document outlining the procedural safeguards, and on the document, actually, the Parents' Center information is printed. However, on our website, on the Department of Special Education website, you can pull up information about the Parents' Center. But of course, with technology, unless you know it's there, sometimes you don't go looking. So we will, you know, make sure that, perhaps we could do something to kind of advertise more our Parents' Center. Good questions, Mr. Burrows. Thank you.
No.
Excuse me. Who do I have? Oh, Ms. Higgins. She's not yelling. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It was very thorough and comprehensive. And I also want to thank you and all the staff for saying that in the last 10 years, there's been a 37% gain in youth being with disabilities, school-ready. And I think you said that there's been a 14% gain just from last year.
Yes.
That's incredible.
Thank you.
So I, I want to thank you for that. I do have a question. I don't know if you want to go to the slide, but on page 12, we're showing continued increases in the, in the 7th graders, but continued inability to move those numbers for the 8th grade. And you talked a little bit about it being algebra, which I certainly can understand challenges in that area. But can you talk a little more about what you think or what could possibly, how, how we can move those numbers?
Well, I think the appropriate use of data to look at where specific students are. So maybe if, again, in collaborative planning meetings, we are looking at the student achievement data, you know, either on our FAST tests or chapter tests, and looking at individual indicators of performance and targeting our instruction, that would begin to move the student achievement. Additionally, we do have some interventions. The difficulty at middle school, I think, is in our scheduling. Sometimes we do have limitations or challenges in fitting in sections of interventions that might be helpful to students. So if you have your English block and your math block, while we don't want our math, our student who's struggling with mathematics to not be in that mathematics class, when are we able to provide the additional support that a student needs? But we're working with that, and we have a middle school priorities committee that is looking at scheduling. And I, again, we have the Academic Resource Support Class that also is at the middle school level, but sometimes it is difficult to fit in the interventions that students need.
And yet, we're successful in doing it at, or we're becoming even more successful at doing it 7th grade. So I would think those students are still in that same school. It's just, just a puzzle, I guess, and you're sorting that through as you move forward.
Right, yeah. Of course, there, you know, there's no magic bullet, no special answer, but I think maybe the curriculum, and I would speak with Dr. Whitehead about this more specifically, perhaps there is a bigger jump in the mathematics.
Yeah, I, I got that one. Can I ask to?
Ms. Higgins, before you, before you move forward, I, I think that it goes back to a point that Joan made earlier in the presentation about this, the least restrictive environment, and this as a, thinking about the And this as a, thinking about this as a continuum of service as opposed to a place. And I do think that as the curriculum becomes more difficult, as we move from sixth to seventh, seventh to eighth, we also have to make sure that children with IEPs are exposed to that content. So, in some cases, we talked about this as a place. And so, students were sent somewhere to be controlled when the individuals who may have been controlling them may not have had the requisite math knowledge to teach algebra. And so, part of this is really twofold. It's really looking at the content, but also looking at the intricacies of the schedule to make sure that these children, particularly as the material gets more difficult, that they also have access to not just the service and support, but the content as well. It's a really important point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. You talked about the least restrictive environment. And how would you discuss parents who have a difference of opinion than the professionals in regards to whether their children should be immersed in a regular school setting versus being in a more specialized program?
Well, the one thing that needs to be always at the fore, Ms. Higgins, is the issue that an IEP is individually developed. So, we look at the student's individual needs and we make the recommendations based on the performance of that student and what we consider to be the barriers in their achievement. And then we make our recommendations as the agency that really has the information. The school system should be the expert in educational settings. So, the first thing I guess I'd suggest is that we're clear with our parents about the privilege and the rights to receive special services. Sometimes I think a parent might look at special education as a punitive issue. And I think what would be most helpful, if we could work with parents in understanding that there is something that is blocking your child's understanding of this. And we would like to give them the maximum support appropriate. So, sometimes it's a little resource assistance for a short period of time. Other times, we might recommend a much more intensive small group instruction. But I think it's about getting the team of experts at the table, engaging the parent in a meaningful way, listening to the parent, documenting what their issues are and concerns are, and then responding. Sometimes you can reach some degree of understanding, of course, when there are differences, about looking at some instructional interventions that may occur for 30 days or 60 days and come back to the table and look at the progress. So, I guess it's really very much about having the experts who are education, in terms of the education, and the experts who are our parents of our students who know more about their children than we do in terms of their behaviors, and getting them together and saying, okay, what is in the best interest? And it is sometimes a difficult area when parents say, oh, no, I really wish for my child to continue in this general education classroom, for example. And we feel that if we could just get that early intervention sooner, the difference would be made in the student's performance. So, a lot of times, early intervention makes a difference, and I would like to get that message to the parents also.
Thank you very much. I'll wait till second round. Thank you.
I did want to respond. Ms. Higgins, if you look at the special ed scores for eighth grade across the state, their graph and slope are exactly the same as Prince George's County's. So, the difficulties we're having are being mirrored, but the slope is exactly the same.
Thank you. Mr. Armwood?
Thank you. I want to echo what everyone else has said. A great presentation and I really do appreciate it. I've seen the work that is done in the early childhood centers and with the special education population preschool. Do we receive, or how is that funded? Do we receive any federal or state funding for that effort?
Those students are grades three, the ages three through five are part of our child count. So, we are funded for our students in early childhood centers. And I appreciate you recognizing that because they are actually nationally recognized. Our early childhood curriculum, several years ago, in fact, was published. But not the one that we're currently using, but in previous years, we had published our early childhood curriculum. So, we continue to be at the fore in terms of what we're doing with our threes, fours, and five-year-olds. And yes, we do get funding.
For those of us who've not spent a day in an early childhood center, I really recommend it. It's inspiring. One of the things that I've heard from parents when they talk about their school has not made AYP, and we look at the charts and we don't make AYP because of that subgroup of special education. I know we're trying to get reauthorization of No Child Left Behind to go to a progress model instead of that hard proficiency number that they have. Are there any, well, first of all, how are students in special centers and non-public placement count towards our measurements under yearly progress? Do they count?
The students who are in our regional schools count in terms of the AltMSA performance. So, they, I believe their scores go back to their boundary area school. Just the regional school students go back to, their scores go back to their regional, to their boundary area.
So, their home school would get their score?
And again, coordinating supervisor who supervises our regional schools, Latrice Satterwhite, is with us. And I'll look to her to correct that, but I think it's correct. I think it's at the fore. And they go back to the, right, so it does impact the base school.
The base school.
For students who are participating in AltMSA, as I thought.
What is our answer for that achievement difference or failure to make achievement in special education groups? I think a couple of schools have made AYP for special education.
Sometimes it's impacted by the numbers of students who are located in a specialized program in a regional school. I mean, in a specialized program. So, just the sheer numbers of students with disabilities impact that school's performance. So, schools that have CSET programs, for example, may have a very difficult time making AYP because of the numbers of students who are identified with disabilities at that school. We have targeted schools that don't make AYP solely because of their special education subgroup and giving them additional supports. For example, we've written a grant recently that supports the use of iPads with our, in our comprehensive special education programs in two schools to see if this will be a very critical component of learning for our students. But basically, I think it's important for us to recognize that students with disabilities are struggling with something that interferes with their learning. It's a processing problem. It's a perceptual problem. It might be a language problem. There is something that we need to recognize and strategies that we need to use to support success for our students with disabilities. And that's why it's so important for us to have autism specialists and specialists in CRI who can go out and work with our teachers and build capacity of our teachers to understand what is impacting that child's learning and what we can do to increase their achievement. And yes, I'm thrilled that in the reauthorization of No Child Left Behind or ESEA, that we will look beyond just the high school achievement model or the school standardized test model and look to growth and closing that gap. Because as you saw from the slides, we are making growth each and every year, and I think that should be counted.
Unfortunately, the depressing thing is I was at the Congress yesterday. We were a group lobbying, and the consensus is it'll be a couple of years before it actually gets done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Waller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, my very special thanks to the entire special needs, special education staff. Certainly, you all are called. And it's, I'm excited about what you do and appreciate sincerely what you do for our special needs students. I too am following up on one of my colleague's questions. And I'm concerned when the students leave the eighth grade and they go into the ninth grade and how we are tracking them and ensuring that they are receiving what they need in high school. Because we know our high schools are large, you know, and it's like a little city almost. And so, I have a concern about what we're doing with that. And then, there's been a perception, and I'll call it a perception, that especially at young ages, we have a large number of minority males that are placed in special education programs. And I'm not quite sure, I don't remember if you gave the data for the males and the females or if it's been broken down, or if you could address that. I recently had a conversation with a parent. And her son, I believe, was having some issues. And she was requesting that her son go into special education class because it was a small class size. She didn't want him in a large class. So, I mean, that's, you know, that's unusual, you know. But there is this perception. So, if you could just, you or Dr. Arbogress could address the perception about the minority males being labeled, that's the terms I'll use. If you could just address that for me, please. Thank you.
Well, actually, I don't think we have a disproportionate number of, I don't think at this point we're identified as disproportionate in terms of students with, identified with disabilities as compared to not in a particular racial category. We have been identified as disproportionate in the number of students that we suspend with, who have disabilities as compared to their general education peers. So, we are really focused more at this point on looking at our discipline strategies and ways to improve keeping students in the classroom in terms of disproportionality than discrepancies in the other subgroup categories, which might be, I think one of the areas is identification of a particular disability. For example, you can also be disproportionate in the number of students you identify as autistic compared to another group. So, the state watches very carefully and does let us know. And of course, they have let us know about the disproportionality and discrepancy in the number of students with disabilities who are disciplinarily removed as opposed to general ed. But I'd yield to Dr. Arbogress if there's additional issues around. Oh, I did want to address the middle school to high school articulation. Because we understand changes for students with disabilities, changes for all students. The number of calls I get from parents of children who are leaving elementary, going to middle, of course, is big. We know that that's a challenge in time for all students, but particularly for students with disabilities, but also the eighth to the ninth grade. So, special education for years has had a particular meeting where we have the special educator from the elementary school speak with a special educator from the middle school to help make that process more seamless for our students with disabilities. So, we sit down with the proposed IEP, in fact, with the IEP, and we share, this student needs an academic resource class. This student needs intensive resource. So, it's very, very, very tracked in terms of special education implementation of services.
I too have heard that concern about African-American boys being overly placed. The state does monitor us, and we are not disproportionate in, by race, in identification of students. However, I think it's really important to know, Joan mentioned response to intervention. Response to intervention does not occur after you have an IEP. It really needs to occur before you have an IEP. So, the trick is, we need to support students who are having difficulties before they actually go through the process. And I think we're trying real hard to say, if you see children who are struggling, let's employ their response to intervention before we actually consider an IEP. And I think that's a really important piece. So, this image of throwing kids into special ed, we want to move away from that. What we want to do is we want to support students as best we can before we consider special ed. And we think that will address that comment that you've heard and I've heard.
Thank you. I'm sure that I have some more questions surrounding that, and I'll just send them in to you because, okay, my time is up and I'll go round two. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I wanted to say thank you for the work that I've seen at the incarcerated, for the incarcerated youth that has been an ongoing concern for me, having worked there for 22 years. Thank you, Dr. Height, for addressing that matter. But I also wanted, I kind of wanted to follow up as well, just how comfortable, which I didn't really see in the presentation, how comfortable are you that you're, that when there are disciplinary issues, that the MDT team and the 504, how comfortable that you're really identifying whether there's a relationship or not? And I guess what I'm saying is, so we want to hear those great stories that are happening, but we also want to hear where we need to see the improvements. And I think that there are some areas that, because it's such a volatile subject, quite frankly. And I also wanted to thank Mr. Thomas in terms of his office where it does seem like we're working harder in terms of, you know, identifying where we don't need the non-public placement, those kinds of things. But I am concerned about how we're doing with the disciplinary areas.
Well, I think it's a concern of all of us and for our students with disabilities and also working very closely with Karen Lynch and the Student Services Office. Because we have seen, as we've looked at our data, that far too many students are missing school, missing instruction. And these are the very students that need to be in the classroom the most. They are our most challenged learners, and we can't afford to have them miss instruction. So, some of the things that, some of the step, I'm not satisfied to answer your question, Ms. Jacobs, no. I don't think anybody in the department or the school system is accepting of these results. That's why we have a discipline charter. That's why we're addressing those issues. One of the things we felt was critical was to get the data to the assistant superintendents and instructional directors and principals about how many days these students are missing. And to track through an Apex Discipline Report that, again, our friends in IT, under the direction of Wes Watts, helped us to develop, tracking these disciplinary removals. And more importantly is, again, building capacity of our teachers to not so quickly remove a student. Now, we have students who have very challenging behaviors, and we need some alternatives, absolutely. So, we run the spectrum. We really run the spectrum of needing special interventions for students with significant behavior problems. Sometimes we've looked at having partnerships, again, with the mental health initiative is one example. That would be a proactive approach to keeping students in school. I think co-teaching is also a very proactive approach because there are times when a student misbehaves. And if you have another adult in the room with you, it's very helpful to be able to extinguish that behavior or to intervene in a negative behavior, or even to be proactive about what causes a behavior. So, I think co-teaching in and of itself can be a strategy to reduce disciplinary removals. So, providing monthly data to our teachers and our principals, asking them to do more supervision around this issue. I have to say that previously, special education frequently provided the data on this out to schools through our specialists, through our supervisors. And the data went to our department chairpersons or our contacts at the elementary schools. And sometimes, that wasn't enough. We needed the principal to know of this data so that they can then reinforce with the teachers what strategies should be used. I do want to support our schools with our more challenged students, particularly with behaviors. We have allocated dedicated assistance in some cases when that's a need. Or, of course, reviewed their IEP to see if there are some behavioral strategies that need to be added to the functional behavioral assessment or the behavior intervention plan that will, again, support the student. So, I think, you know, also the need for professional development is critical. And it's difficult because we count on a trainer of trainers model very frequently, and they get back to the school and unfortunately can't deliver all of the strategies to all of the teachers that they need to. So, having PBIS in our middle schools and working with Student Services with PBIS, it's not the only thing that will work, but it is something that supports positive behaviors.
Thank you. I think oftentimes when we, when the board gets the paperwork to around disciplinary issues, you know, oftentimes the box that asks whether or not it's related is, it's always no. It's, and I'm not suggesting that it should all the time be yes. I'm just saying that when you look at the correlation then of our incarcerated youth who are charged as adults, and then they also have IEPs that we have to, that we have to meet, it just, you know, just causes me to say, I really would like to make sure that we're paying really close attention to how we're doing that work.
Round two?
Let's see. I have.
Let's see, I have Ms. Boston, Mr. Burrows, Ms. Higgins, and Ms. Waller.
One of the things I want to know, if there's any way that you can provide the board with that data on the number of students with IEPs that actually graduate college-ready or work-ready? I'm just curious, is that a number? Because I do know we're preparing our granddaughter to graduate college-ready, so I'm just hoping that we are good with that, that data will track.
We can do that. Thank you. Mr. Burrows?
And I'm just going to ask a series of questions so I don't buzz out. Do we, I know several parents and community groups have asked me about, do we suggest to parents to put their students on any medication to Ritalin, for example? And I, I got that from a civic association president, and also on slide, on slide 16, I'm looking at the interventions, implementation of interventions. And are these interventions available for our charter school students? Well, I kind of know, well, are they available for charter school students? Slide 16. And also in the RTI online, is that also available for our charter school students? Because I know of a case that's close to me, where a quarter and a half has gone by, and, you know, they're just starting to implement 504 and things of that nature. And that's truly unacceptable. And a tool like this could be extremely, extremely helpful to ensuring that when a student transfers mid-year, that, that team of teachers immediately starts implementing whatever necessary steps needed to make sure that student is successful. And I had a follow-up to Ms. Boston's question, but I'm struggling to read my handwriting right now, so you can answer those questions, and I'll try to make this out.
Well, first of all, our IEP teams consist of special educators, of course, a principal or his or her designee, and other guidance counselors, other disciplines. But in no case would I think that an IEP team would suggest medication. We do have parents and, who provide information, medical information to us, and we would look at that medication, but we would never be the ones that are making those decisions about medication or not. That is ultimately and absolutely a parental decision. So, we do have school psychologists who are knowledgeable, and neuropsychologists who are knowledgeable about, for example, students with Attention Deficit Hyperactivity Disorder, which is not federally identified disability. But sometimes, students with Attention Deficit Hyperactivity Disorder, their learning is so impacted that they are identified as other health impaired. And in that case, again, we'd have psychologists participate and give input in terms of what the student's academic needs are, and perhaps behavioral needs, but not medication. So, I just wanted to be clear on that. There are times when nurses participate in our IEP meetings, but generally, that's for students who have some health-related issues.
Definitely understand that. I think, I talked to a social association president months ago about it, and I think she was just talking about nationally about this issue. So, it has no correlation to do with the school system, I just wanted to know.
The intervention, I'm sorry, the interventions are available in our charter schools. So, we have fewer numbers, and we do staff our charter schools, of course, with special education teachers and paraeducators to support those programs. And so, not all of these initiatives and interventions, I'm sorry, are available in every school. So, some are high school interventions, some are elementary school. But certainly, the I-station intervention should be available if it's an elementary intervention, and Journeys is also available, those reading interventions, and I think there are math interventions that are also available. There may also be some things that the charter schools are doing in terms of tutorial programs that I'm not familiar with, that is not a part of a special education intervention.
Can I get a list of what each charter school is doing? Because, you know, I'm under the impression that they're clearly not doing enough, and I'm not sure who monitors them to ensure that they're actually following through the 504s and the IEPs. And, you know, I'll talk to you about that offline.
We've actually dedicated special ed instructional specialists to, you know, focus on our charter schools, so we do have a resource available to them.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. Burrows, the IEP and 504s are different.
Absolutely.
Which means the approach and monitoring are different as well. So, it's, some would be under the gods of special education, and some would be under the gods of other departments who are responsible.
So, 504 and IEP are potentially under, so 504 is potentially not under the special education office?
No.
That is correct.
Which office does that come under?
So, the individuals who work on that are generally people, the guidance counselors who are responsible, the case managers for 504.
Okay. So, do they, I'll talk.
But nonetheless, we'll get you a list of the charter schools and what they're doing in terms of the interventions for students.
Thank you.
Ms. Higgins? Thank you. On your presentation, you had a comparison chart of the individual disabilities that, that the students had. And I guess you can see some fluctuation in terms of where our students, what kind of disabilities that they have. So, I'm wondering about how our teachers are trained in order to be responsive as those specific individuals' disabilities kind of vary.
Well, I appreciate the question, Ms. Higgins, because we have so few resources to get out to sometimes, to get the training that's needed. And I'll give you an example. We have a rather large autism program in one of our elementary schools. And it is not simply the stu, the teachers of the students with autism that need to be trained. It is every professional in that building, it's every person in the building, actually, because students with autism are unique in their needs for structure. And so, I am very excited that I have the autism specialists, but they are spread thin. So, we do do targeted support, one of, because we've had such a struggle in terms of being able to pull teachers out and deliver professional development, although many come after school from four to seven at John Carroll, is almost always busy every evening. Sometimes we go into the school. And so, for autis, schools that have programs, specific programs, like the programs for autism, we do take our specialists and go into the schools and ask the principal for time, either after school, during, during the planning, the collaborative planning time, to train our teachers.
And I'm going to, because I want to get my questions in. The, oh, do you have consultant resources that if you're kind of stumped as to what to do with a particular child, that you can refer or discuss with?
Well, we have some contractual, we do have some contractual monies. And generally, that requires us to have a process. We try to follow very carefully the process that Mr. Miles puts out in terms of using consultants and so, but for example, in our early childhood centers, we've needed to use some consultants for some mental health services, and we do have some funds for those services.
Okay. I, I wanted to ask about the impact, although I, I think I know a lot of it, but want to hear from you, of the loss of the H1B special education teachers. I think we're, have a significant vacancy rate in special ed, and in part behind that. Was wondering if you would comment about that as well?
Well, it, it was unfortunate, Ms. Higgins, because we did have quite a few foreign national teachers who we worked very well with in terms of training. Many of them taught in specific programs, such as our CRI classrooms, and they were very effective teachers. And as their visas expire, we're becoming, you know, we will continue to have vacancies. So, it is an impact on, in some of those sites, we have substitute teachers, in others, we've been able to transfer, you know, other teachers in or hire newly hired. But we did have a tremendous impact. I think Bob Gaskins in HR could, or maybe Ms. Schelling could give you a more specific number of how that impacted special education. But I know that it, we had, I think, approximately 300 teachers, special educators, that were foreign nationals.
I have two statements, brief statements, can I do that now or wait till? Go ahead, okay. I just want to mention that Robert Frost, which is in District Two, in one of the two elementary schools that services the disabled, emotionally disabled children, is the top performing elementary school in District Two. And I think that a lot of credit goes to a lot of people, and want to thank you for the hard work there. And then, again, my colleagues have said it over and over again, but to be in compliance now with four out of seven of the states monitoring us is really a tremendous credit to you and all your staff. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Dr. Height, that is all I have on the Q.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Ms. Rothgab, for your presentation and for your leadership. And I know you have several team members here from Special Education Department, and I'd like to acknowledge them and their work as well. So, if you'd stand up and let us acknowledge you and thank you. Thank you.
And I know I speak for all of our, us in the Department of Special Education when I express our appreciation to you for your leadership, for your support in the community. I see many of you out in our community meetings, and I'm happy you're there and look forward to working with you. Thank you again.
Thank you. So, Madam Chair, that brings us to budget consent agenda. We have three items, item 8.1, 8.2, and 8.4.
Move to accept. Thank you, Ms. Beck. It's been properly moved, the second, that we accept the budget, approve the budget consent agenda items. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have no items under non-consent or governance unfinished business, second reader, so we will move to 11.0, new business. 11.1, Board of Education requested annual operating budget. 11.2, 2012, 2013 school calendar. 11.3, 2013, 2014 school calendar. 11.4, Board Policy 9354, Board Members Vouched Reimbursement of Expenses. 11.5, Alternative Governance Option for Priority Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Height. It's been properly moved, the second. Colleagues, no discussion on first reader items. All in favor? Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, motion pass. Okay, colleagues, we now have, Dr. Height, let's see, okay. What do we have next? We don't have any emergency items. We do have one registered speaker for non-agenda items. And that registered speaker is Tomasina Johnson. Please come forward. Okay. Ms. Johnson is not here. We will move on. Board Chair yields to Ms. Higgins.
Madam Chair, I move to confirm actions taken in executive session.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins, and thank you, Ms. Waller, for the second. And that includes acting and interim appointments, all employee acting interim assignments, employee appeals, and legal matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Seeing none, any abstentions? Motion pass. And now, a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you.